I thought that was just the back.
Oh.
Just as a reminder.
The other side.
All the pro tem at the beginning.
Uh huh.
Okay, Gail first. Okay. Okay. And these don't. Alright, so let me go to this and then we jump down to this. Alright, are you following this? Susan. You should probably just tell her.
Hearing and then you guys get to deliver.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess I'll just talk it through when we get started. I love Eagles scouts. I hate papers so much. Don't rush Kathy, we're all just setting up too.
Did you pick up? Really?
Yeah, just give me a okey dokey when you're ready.
Okay. Plug me in there, Coach?
Yes, certainly. Give me some juice.
Yeah, give me some juice.
Everybody ready? Kathy, whenever you're ready.
On record.
Good evening, welcome to the City of Lincoln City City Council Meeting for Monday, February 12th. It's about 6:06 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Don Williams.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Kip Ward is excused. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
And Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Would you please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I think so, yeah, with council's permission. I just want to, many of you may notice that Counselor Ward is not with us tonight and he has published, or his family's published, a reason why. He's been diagnosed with a very severe illness and we're all praying for his swift recovery. Kip's a valuable part of this council and be deeply missed while he's away. So we just, our thoughts and prayers are with him and I think there was a message that they're not really going to be looking for visitors and calls right now, but they'll give more information as it comes available. Okay? At that, with that, we also need to appoint a council president pro tem in his absence. So I'll be looking for a nomination for that.
I'd like to nominate Susan Walkie.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries?
Thank you.
Now, that's just the nomination. Do we have to do something else on that?
Yeah, then we have to vote.
Then we have to vote to appoint, so any motion to appoint, I guess.
I move to appoint Counselor Walkie as the president pro tem.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Counselor Walkie. Alright, we're going to have a few changes in the order of things tonight. Should I get them right here and everyone can yell at me later? We're going to move up Gail Kimerling's appreciation before the submission of audited statements. We're going to move up special order of business before the ordinances. Is that okay with everyone? We'll move K up before I. Yeah, no problem? Okay. Keep me honest then. Alright, consent agenda. Corrected minutes of meeting November 13th, 2017, regular, here, sorry. Regular meeting, minutes of regular meeting, December 11th, 2017. Regular meeting, minutes of regular meeting, January 8th, 2018. Regular meeting, minutes of regular meeting, January 22nd, 2018. And Oregon Liquor Control Commission, full on premises, commercial and on off premises, Sixty's Cafe. Motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it and I have a comment.
Do you want to pull one?
No, I just have a comment.
Alright. Motion and second, discussion?
I just wanted to say I did send to the city recorder a number of typos and corrections such as Joe Roloff is really Georgia Roloff. I just want to say that one out loud so she knows that we caught that one. And there are a few others, but they're not major. But that was the most major I noticed.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. No council deliberation. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak as we speak. Okay.
Paul.
Gerlach.
Hello, and I thank everyone for being here. I came here today to just bring up some concerns that I have about the warming shelter. My name is Paul Gerlach, I'm a resident.
Could I have you pull that a little closer? Your soft speaker there.
Hold the whole thing to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, give us your full name, this first and last.
Oh, it's Paul Gerlach.
Thank you.
That's my eight-year-old son behind me, goes to Taft Elementary School. Just a brief story, I had noticed an increase in homeless people down there in the Taft area and I was wondering, you know, what was going on. And when I was taking my son to school, I seen a bunch of people hanging out, you know, in front of that building, right next to the tavern. And so I dropped my son off, went in and spoke with the woman. You know, I feel that their heart's in the right place, but you know, the concerns that I have is that it's extremely close to the elementary school and we just don't know who these people are. And they have some pretty solid rules in there. If anybody's doing drugs or if they're drinking, they're kicked out. Unfortunately, they're kicked out right into the street and we, you know, we don't know who they are. You know, if, at the very least, there could be a procedure that if they want to be there, they have to give up their name. We have to know who they are and that name needs to go to the police department so that they can be checked out. You know, people got to hit bottom before they want help and, you know, I don't think that the community should suffer for that. You know, it's our children, it's our residents, and it's our businesses. That's who we need to focus on. You know, the warming shelter, I guess it's only been open for like 23 days. I question that. I think it's been open a little more than that as far as helping people in there. The, I've seen an incident where, to me, it looked like somebody was being dumped off there and with this facility, there is, in our community, you know, money may be spent a little better with supporting AA groups and NA groups and dual, you know, meetings for people with mental illness. The 3,000-foot square, you know, building, you know, I think a lot of real serious thought needs to go in where this place is going to be placed. I think it's just unfair to the businesses to, you know, you build it, they're going to come, period. And you look at Seattle, you look at Oregon, you got people living up and down the freeways and, you know, if you're going to help these people, then having a place literally 60 feet from a tavern and 125 feet from a liquor store, I think is ridiculous. You know, that's not helping anybody. These people obviously have issues. They're either drug dependent or they're mentally ill or they unfortunately went to the casino, lost all their money and they can't get back home, you know? I don't know. But, you know, they, there's got to be rules in a place like that if you're going to open it up. I mean, strict rules. You have to detour the bad guys, you know? You have to. Or you're just going to come there and take. And if they want treatment, they want help, you know, and like I said, people's hearts are in the right place, but if you don't have, you know, a system and, you know, there could be, you know, child molesters that are running, you know, and they're mentally ill and they're, they go in with drugs, they kick them out. Well, they're really, really mad. And where are they going to go? There's a park right behind that little building and then it's a stone throw from the school. Are they in the bushes, you know, just waiting for a little kid to walk to school? And we don't know who they are. We have no idea who they are. I can't go into the hospital and not give them my name. Can't do that. They want to know who I am. And I think for the safety of kids, the safety of the community and a deterrent, if they want help, then, then okay, give them help, but, you know, they're going to have to, if they got warrants for their rest, there isn't a treatment facility in the world that'll take them with a warrant pending. They have to take care of that stuff. So give up your name, take care of your warrants, you know, whatever, but we need to know who they are. And I think that that 3,000-square-foot building should be, you know, maybe placed kind of out of the city, you know, to where it's not next to a tavern and it's literally focused on treatment. You know, if they want help, then obviously, you know, they should get help, but, you know, not, a lot of people, I spent $270,000 to move to the beach, you know? And a lot of people with other motives would certainly like to come down here for a free bed and food and, you know, a beachfront.
Thank you, Paul. Sure appreciate it. Please feel free to come back and let us know how things go.
Thank you very much.
Don't be a stranger. Alright, Patrick Alexander.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Alexander. I'm the president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. I am here to speak to you about agenda item number 18, which is our request for the city council to initiate a zoning amendment. In your packet, you have a report from the city attorney laying out the requirements for that and there's a recommendation on there to decline the request and I am here to hopefully talk you into going the other way and accepting the request. I've tried to zero in on the reasons for refusal, given in the memo. The first one seemed to be that there was, the Taft Village Core zoning, which is currently in place, was the result of a public process. And I know most of you were here for that, I certainly was. I recall the process going on. There was really no community discussion about emergency shelters that I recall during that process. I know that the zoning came out of that, but it's, it would be a stretch to say that the community coalesced behind a particular view regarding emergency shelters one way or the other. I don't recall the subject coming up. So, you know, I don't think the council would need to worry necessarily about overturning the will of the people if it were to initiate the zoning amendment. I don't think that the will of the people was particular, was expressed either way during that process. The second, the second reason for refusal seems to be that due to the potential for criticism that might come the council's way because of course, the mayor is part owner of the building that we rent. And I wanted to just be very clear that if the city does decline to initiate the zoning amendment, the bill, the $2,500 bill to initiate that won't fall onto Don and Debbie Williams' desk. They are the landlord, it's not their responsibility. We are the tenant, it is ours. So that would come out of our limited funds. So that means $2,500 that we can't spend on anything else. I've been, in the three years I've been with the shelter, I've been amazed by this community's generosity with people digging deep to pay for cots and blankets and food, anything to help bring comfort to some of our most needy community members. We can raise money for those kinds of things. Fundraising for a zoning amendment is a much tougher sell. The city has been enormously generous with a $45,000 grant that was awarded last year that has allowed us to continue our shelter operation and to add a daytime homeless resource center. We are wondering if you can just stretch just this a little bit further and initiate the zoning amendment. The other burden that would fall on the warming shelter if the city declines to initiate the amendment would be the task of assembling the findings necessary to support a zoning amendment application. It mentions in the memo here that that would be a substantial burden and I agree. We have a very good board and we will do our best, but we are all volunteers. We're doing this in addition to our day jobs and raising our kids and caring for our parents and all the other things that, as I'm sure you all know, we all do. The planning director, who is a professional planner, would do a much better job. It would take us 10 times as long to do something less than half as good and it would also tie up our board at a time when we need to be fundraising to find land for a permanent building, which, taking the previous speaker's points into account, is desperately needed. We need to get a shelter in an appropriate part of the city, long-term. To sum up, the city initiating this amendment would be the most efficient use and the most efficient and logical use of resources and expertise. It would allow the warming shelter to spend our limited funds on critical needs and it would result in the best quality application for the council to review. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and tackle them.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. Mr. Force.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Force, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Lincoln City. I might add, I'm a volunteer at the warming shelter. I've been there when it was back at the church and the new one now and it's extremely well-run, have really good security and it's a, it's the real deal. I think it's a great, great thing for Lincoln City. I just might do sense on that. Justin Werner of Lincoln City Homepage came in two months ago in front of the council with pictures and questions about an unauthorized event. There was no permits to run at Canyon City Park. It was at High Tide and Big Surf where tourists were rolled by a log on the city ramp where there was no safety crew to monitor the crowd and to keep the tourists safe from the elements. The organizers of this event were told by Ed Dreistat that they didn't need a permit and go ahead and run the event. In an email five days before this event, Justin forewarned Ed Chief Killian and Ron Chandler of the danger posed by the elements at the city park. I have had to obtain a special events permit for over 13 years and supply over $15,000 of insurance in this time span and these out-of-town incompetent promoters got a free ride and almost killed some tourists due to their negligence and Ed's permission to run with no safeguards. Justin was told by Ron that he would get back to them. I've appeared in front of the council three times about the same problem and told, "We will get back to you." That hasn't happened. Curiously, after watching the video of one of the council meetings, when Counselor Walkie asked about the joint committee meeting with John Force, Ron Chandler said, "I think it's appropriate for me to review with our attorney, with Ed Dreistat and others, our interpretation of the ordinance and the permitting process to make sure I include the police chief in that to make sure we are doing it correctly." I don't know that it requires us to have people that are on the outside of the organization to participate in that, but I do think there is merit in following through with that. However, in the printed minutes of that council meeting, it says Counselor Walkie asked about the joint committee meeting with John Force. Mr. Chandler advised that he will hold a meeting with Mr. Force, the police chief, city attorney, and Ed Dreistat. So what's it going to be? You know? The, the video doesn't, doesn't jive with the minutes, with the written minutes. There is a major disconnect between the video and the transcribed record and I still can't run my permitted event because of safety issues created by Ed Dreistat's dissolution of the safeguards designed to protect the public by the special event permit itself. If the city's salaried officials, Ed Dreistat, Ron Chandler, and Richard Apicello can't solve this problem, I think it is the elected official's job to replace them with workers that can. When can I get some resolution to this ongoing problem? This is the third time I've showed up. Last time we were here, Apicello said that Ron's on vacation. This is over two months since this thing has been brought up and nobody's telling me anything.
Add here?
Sure. This problem has been resolved. I think we gave a report to you in my weekly report. The staff members that I mentioned did meet together. We reevaluated the interpretation of the ordinance. It does require a permit. We put the enforcement of that, both past and future violations of that in the hands of our police department and they are currently looking into that. We also advised the people that were holding that, that event, that they would have to seek a permit in the future. So everybody should be on the same page.
And was that communicated, Mr. Force?
I don't, apparently not.
Our apologies for that. So that's where you're at now. And if you need any more, I guess you guys got to get together and discuss it from there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else who did not sign up but wishes to speak, come forward, please. Just give us your first and last and stay close to the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Justin Spears. Some of you know me. I'm a resident here in Lincoln City. I'm here today. April Spears was also wishing to attend, but she couldn't get out of work. I'd like to thank Don Williams for taking my call and pointing me to the right person to speak to, Counselor Casper, about a complaint that I had. She represents the ward I live in and both of you were really helpful and I appreciate you and your help in pointing me in the right direction, telling me what I should be doing about this. Our dispute involves behavior from Mr. Chandler specifically, but I'm also here to express concern regarding the possibility that City Hall is not a safe space for citizens, employees, or visitors in general. I have seen allegations of inappropriate behavior that I cannot confirm in local papers. I haven't followed the specifics, so I hope they aren't true and if they are, I hope the correct people are held accountable. April and I met with Mr. Chandler on February 1st after Ron and I had a, what I consider a mild disagreement over an email that I felt was regrettable and would be best sorted out in person. Chandler agreed to meet with us promptly. He was friendly, shaking my hand and addressing me by name and allowing us into his office. He did not address April, but she followed us into the room. Once the doors were shut, neither of us could get a full sentence out anyway. I've talked to Ron a lot. He's always been polite and friendly. This was new. I tried to break the ice with him. I started off by saying, "I apologize if you didn't interpret my email the way I intended, but you know how email can be, right? Miscommunications happen." But Mr. Chandler did not understand this nor did he find it funny, which is fine. He told me that he expected to be addressed in a formal manner. My lack of "dear sirs" and "sincerely yours" is not meant to belittle anyone. I blame the generational gap for that. I'm not that young, but I'm Lincoln City young. So I do apologize for being a millennial and I do apologize for being a little blunt sometimes and anyone can feel free to tell me when they think I'm out of line or if I'm, I'm more than willing to clarify and, you know, so forth. I did with Ms. Casper, actually. I owed her an apology. I didn't intend to offend her, but I did. Unfortunately, Chandler became very angry. April pointed out to me later that he was shaking with rage. He consistently raised his voice. He asked me the same question at least nine times that I counted, but never once did he give me an opportunity to answer that question. Instead, he shouted over me before I could get more than a couple of words in, every single time without exception. I repeatedly asked Mr. Chandler if I could have an opportunity to answer his questions without being yelled at. He would agree to that occasionally, but then immediately interrupt me anyway. So I said to him, "Ron, it might be helpful if we can work towards an understanding here." He replied by saying, "I think we will have a hard time coming to an understanding." I expressed disappointment in his pessimistic and hostile attitude. I told him that even if he took offense to an opinion I expressed or statement that I made, that I was trying to be very polite here and sort everything out. I have no personal vendetta against the guy. None. I don't know him, sure he's great. At that point, he called for his employee to come in, stating that he would like another person in the room. That was fine with us, of course. But this is the second time a city official has treated me as if I were a violent threat and screamed at me. That's why I don't come alone. April is a very calm person and tends to be good at deescalating conflict, but she didn't get the opportunity to demonstrate that. I don't want to recite the entirety of a 10-minute-long, one-sided screaming match. We both went over that in great detail with Judy Casper already and, and I want to emphasize that nobody took my side or his side, they're just following the process and being professional. I just want to say publicly that Ron's behavior that day was unprofessional. I consider it abusive and incompatible with the requirements of public service. He says he dislikes me, which is fine, I'm not for everyone, but he cannot let his emotions and personal animosity cause him to flip out on citizens who are remaining perfectly calm and acting appropriately in person. Chandler repeatedly ordered me to sue the city. I do not want to do any such thing. Ms. Apicello's busy enough, I'm sure. I point this out because I question whether it's in our best interest to have a city manager who dares citizens to sue our government. Once Chandler kicked us out, we left as promptly as possible. I had to pack up a couple of things. He stood over me and kept berating me, but I just tuned him out and said, "Ron, I just got to get my stuff, I'm on my way out, I don't want to be here either." I expressed my disappointment at how the encounter was handled. I was walking behind April as she got to the swinging door that leads outside of his office area. At that point, I felt Chandler elbowing me subtly in the back, just a little bit. Then again, not enough to push me again forward, but just a bit into April. Sorry, I misread that. He pushed me enough to push me into April just a little bit, but I do not interpret that as an assault. I believe he's either trying to provoke me into doing something stupid or just trying to assert his dominance. I don't really get it, honestly. And I hold no ill will against him. I just want to be held accountable for his behavior and I believe that process is being followed and I appreciate the help. And I want it on the public record, just in case it happens again, not calling for him to be fired or anything like that. This is more about like, this happened, let's put it out there and hope it doesn't happen again. I've never seen him act that way before. I hope he never does again. And I trust you guys do the right thing and I know my time is up from a sound, so I just want to quickly say that there is a person in town that I will call Mr. X because he does not deserve to be name by name. He has threatened Mr. Chandler and I do not condone that, I condemn that. He's threatened other people as well. I condemn that 100%.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming forward. Yeah, thanks, David. Alright. All right. Anyone else who did not sign up, wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. All right, this is where we make one change. We have an employee appreciation. Gail Kimberling. I'm sorry, only one person.
Counselors, Mayor, we're gonna have a party up here. We are here. Hi, I'm Jeannie Sprague with Lincoln City Parks and Recreation. We're here in support to acknowledge Gail Kimberling, Lincoln City Community Center Director, for ten years of exemplary service to the city of Lincoln City and to Parks and Recreation. I'm gonna have everyone introduce themselves in just a moment. Boone Marker, our recreation supervisor, does wish she was here to acknowledge Gail, too, but he's out of town. I'd just like to say since day one of my working with Gail, I've observed and admired her commitment to our community members, Parks and Recreation staff, and to anyone who walks through the door of our community center. We're gonna highlight just a few of Gail's many accomplishments over ten years. We won't take up too much time, but there's a lot. And I would really like to acknowledge the care, dedication, devotion, and ethic that she brings to Lincoln City Parks and Recreation. One minute she's supervising an all-staff meeting, helping lead and be a leader. Next minute, she's at the front desk so that someone can go take a break. The next minute after that, she's sweeping up leaves at the front desk so that there's a welcoming sight for people walking into our community center, and this is Gail Kimberling. As a leader, she is why our community center runs so well. So, thank you, Gail.
I'm Lorie LaFawn, member of Services, and I've been on Gail's team for nine years, so I'm honored to be a part of this tonight, very much. Right after Gail started, she founded the Lincoln City Marathon, now having its 10th annual anniversary this spring. Also, the Jingle Bell Jog 5K, which is in December. She established and also coaches the middle school cross-country and track and field programs. Due to her recruiting and hiring skills for recreation supervisors, the youth sports and Rett Kids participation is off the charts. On the facility side, under Gail's lead, the pools have been converted to Cal-Hipo and UV sanitation, eliminating the use of chlorine gas. During the pool closure, Gail scrubbed and painted walls. She and I even had some fun cleaning out drains. It's true. Gail converted the lights in the natatorium and gymnasium from halogen to LED, upgraded the boiler, heat exchangers, and hot water holding tanks in the aquatic center. She also installed the Jumbotron. Gail secured a $20,000 grant to help fund the half marathon and the Rett Kids Summer Day Camp, as well as a $13,500 grant to purchase new life jackets and lifeguard training equipment. Page two. Because of her accomplishments, we have now a 71% increase in active memberships from 2012. That's just counting members and drop-ins. In a year's period, about 68,000 people come through the door, just members and drop-ins. This does not count everyone that we see for swim meets, for the senior center, Meals on Wheels, tax preparation, indoor soccer, line dancing, and all the room reservations for meetings, events, and celebrations. Thanks to Gail, we truly have a community center.
My name's Nicholas Deeds, and because of Gail's personnel skills and experience, she reconstructed the whole aquatic staff, which brought me to Lincoln City. Actually, before I even started the interview process, just the energy and enthusiasm that Gail Kimberling had made me want to be part of the team, and I'm glad that she hired me. She's established a member service position. She's also had a successful nomination for a former recreation program supervisor for Outstanding New Professional Award. Her marketing skills are above and beyond anything that I've seen, even while trying to finish my MBA at Oregon State University. She's established a partnership with the News Guard to do full-colored glossy fun guides at no cost to the city, also establishing, in this generation, a Facebook and Twitter account with 2,000-plus followers. Her partnership skills are out of this world. She has partnerships with the Lincoln County School District to do a cooperative agreement, so they use our facility for the facilities they do not have. In exchange, they do not pay anything, which brings employees, staff members, and more of a community center to the community center. She also has established the Samaritan Health System for employees, survivor fit, and pre-diabetes boot camp, so to help you stay more fit and don't go down the deadly road of diabetes. She has done the Ocean Lake School Reswim Program. We just started that up, and we're gonna do that for the second graders in March. She's also done the Oregon Marine Advanced Technology Education for Robot Controlled Vehicles competition for the second year. We had one, they left and did it at another facility, and they loved us so much they decided to come back. She also does AARP Tax Aid and Driver Safety Program. Personal, Gail Kimberling has done many things that is, just, there's tons. The leadership that she has in Lincoln County, all the track meets, the long-distance cross-country, and all the marathons that she runs and helps put on as well. Thank you, Gail, for everything that you've done.
We're very appreciative of all you've done for us. All right, now we go back to the more mundane. I gotta figure out where I was.
Audit statement.
Audit statement. Thank you. And I didn't mean that you're mundane. Our auditors and Debbie edits numbers, and off it goes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packets tonight was our fiscal, I'm gonna go and then go back.
Oh, okay. All right.
Our fiscal 2016-17 audited statement, which received an unmodified audit opinion, so yay. With me tonight are two managing partners from Talbot Corvola. I always call them TKW, I'm sorry. Who does our audit, has done for several years. They like to come and meet with council and give a report on our audit, so I'll have them come up. And then afterwards, I was gonna go through some of the findings with some comments, so...
And for the folks at home who don't know who you are.
Okay. I'm Debbie Mamonie with Finance. I'm gonna pop back, and then I'll come back. So Tim Gillette and Brad Anderson are here from TKW.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Appreciate that. Yes, I'm Tim Gillette with Talbot Corvola in Warwick. But most people do just call us TKW. With me is Brad Anderson, another one of our audit partners. I recognize some of you from last year and a few new faces as well. Mr. Mayor, I don't know what you're talking about. This is the most exciting part of the council meeting.
I don't agree. I thought we were talking about something else entirely. I am so excited. I can barely sit here.
Well, we do have the annual financial report to present tonight. It's 100 and some pages, so I thought we could go over each page individually in quite some depth. Okay, just kidding about that part. It's a big report. I'm gonna go through it actually pretty quickly, because that's how I've learned over the years that most people prefer for me to do, but at any time, happy to slow down, stop, take questions, whatever, so just let me know. It is a big document. There's only a small part of it that's really ours, speaking for the outside auditors. Most of it is from Debbie and her staff. So our part starts on page one, the independent auditor's report. Goes through quite a bit of detail about who's responsible for what. The good part starts at the top of page two, where we give our opinion, which is really what you're paying us for, what you want to get out of us. And in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. So as Debbie said, an unmodified report, kind of the good housekeeping seal of approval from your auditors, the kind you want to get. There's three different kinds of audit reports you could get. This is the good kind. It then goes on to talk about how much responsibility we take for all the other sections in the annual financial report, the required supplementary information. There's some parts of that that we don't express an opinion on just because we don't do enough work to give assurance on it. But most of it, we give an opinion that it's fairly stated in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. There's also some other information included that, again, mostly we give an "in relation to" opinion that it's fairly stated when you consider the entire report. There are a few things that we don't express an opinion on at all. Those are the additional schedules listed in the table of contents. Then we do call your attention to the fact that there's some reporting required by Oregon minimum standards. Our report's immediately followed by management's discussion and analysis on page four. If you don't read all 100 and whatever, 20-some pages or something, I encourage everybody to read the MDNA. It's a good summary. It's a good overview of what there is, plus it gives some additional context and some comparative information that you don't have in the basic financial statements. So I would encourage everybody to read that. That's only like four pages and has a lot of good information in it. The basic financials themselves begin on page 12. There's not much new to report on this year. There's no big changes in the statements that, as a result of any changes in accounting principles or anything. So I really won't talk about the statements themselves, and again, unless there are questions. Those are followed by the footnotes that give you a lot more detailed information about all the various accounts, classes of accounts, and help you understand everything a little more clearly. And again, I'm not gonna talk about those either, but they are all there, and I'm happy to answer questions. Followed by the required supplementary information, some information about pension plans and so forth. Again, I'm gonna skip over all of that. In fact, I'm gonna skip all the way to the back at this point, which is page 112, which is our report as required by Oregon state regulations. The state of Oregon requires us to look at certain things, and there's a bullet point list of some of those things that the state wants us to look at. We look at those every year as part of our audit. We did have two things we had to report to the state. There was an over expenditure in one fund. I will say that's not all that unusual. Many of the cities we audit do have that for one reason or another. And also, there was a supplemental budget where I think the city didn't realize it really was a supplemental budget, and the public hearing wasn't held as it should have been. So those are the two things that we found there. There are also some other documents that we issue. There's, let's see. There's one that's what we call the letter to those charged with governance. This one happens to say, "Attention, Don Williams," as opposed to the other one, which for some reason doesn't have an "Attention, Don Williams" on the letter, where we go through respective responsibilities, a little bit about our plan, scope, and timing, talk about significant accounting practices and so forth. And we call your attention to some of the new things that are coming down the pike. This next year, there's a statement from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the GASB, on other post-employment benefits, sometimes called OPEB. You might remember, was it three years ago, we had to expand the disclosure and change of reporting regarding pensions. That was GASB 68. This is the GASB 75. It does for OPEB pretty much what GASB 68 did for pensions. So next year, 63018, I guess the one we're in now currently, there will be more reporting for OPEB in the financial statements and additional disclosures, and some of the numbers are gonna be a little bit different. So that's coming down the pike. The other letter that the mayor's name didn't get on, for whatever reason, reports on our findings with our review and evaluation of internal control. We did find some things we considered to be material weaknesses. We list them here. In this first group, I think there are five items where we say there was an overstatement in one account and an understatement in a corresponding account, so you should understand that. That doesn't mean, you know, some money went missing or anything like that. It's some money was reported in one category that should have been in a different category. We consider that to be a misstatement, and so we're required to report it to you, and that's what we're doing with this letter. We also found that there were some transfers in and transfers out that should have been eliminated so that they, although they, let's say, the net effect is the same, transfers in were overstated, transfers out were overstated by some amounts. And finally, we found something we consider to be a significant deficiency, which was the timeliness of review of things. Review is, you know, part of your system of internal control allows you to catch errors and fix them in a timely manner, and some of that review was not happening in a timely basis. So, questions?
No, I don't think so.
If not, well, okay, if you recover.
Will you stick around if Counsel Hinton recovers?
Depends how long that takes.
They're gonna be sitting here for a minute. Thank you.
Sure.
Coffee gets in the way of a lot of things, especially communication. But I want to thank you both for being here and for your good work on our behalf. And when I was reading through this, sometimes I just see numbers. I'm, you know, I try to understand it. But, and I wouldn't use the word concern, but I just have a question about the type of things that you did have to report and to pull out of, pull out of the work that you did to see if we're in line or not in line of where we need to be. And I just would like you to tell us from your point of view and all the audits that you do, where are we? Are we kind of average? Are we, or what, where do we as councils, is there a worry for us in all of this?
Okay, that's, I think how best to answer that. We would prefer that you were ideal as auditors. Basically, my job is to point out mistakes. Really, all I'm looking for are things that are wrong. I don't ever really come in and say, "Hey, you did a great job. Everything's right here." Well, I mean, we sort of do, but we'll point out. Everything that we noted did get corrected, and it's part of our job is to find those Some things, like the over expenditure, I'd say that's pretty common. I would call that average. I have other cities that have more over expenditures than this, you know, every year. I mean, ideally, you should strive to not have any, but, and the state would say you shouldn't have any, but I'd say that was pretty common. The misclassifications, some years, I would say that's, you would prefer not to have those. And I think Debbie is gonna talk a little bit about some of the things that she's going to do or is doing to fix some of those things. Want to say something?
Actually, I have. Can I swap seats with you?
Sure, sure, sure.
I thought I'd go through some of the findings because I think rating it can sound a little ominous, perhaps. So I wanted to show clearly what they were speaking of. Tim did allude to the budget overage that happened. We had a budget of $5,000 for materials and services and ended up having an expenditure of $26,000. This particular fund, the Urban Renewal Property Rehab Program, has been a bit problematic for me because historically, we've only reported capital items. But there's expenses in here that aren't capital, and yet, we're not supposed to have not capital in here. So we tried adding another line called "other payments." We did that one year. This year, the expenses until the end of the year, when we re-class, were in here, but then I don't reconcile because we reconcile to the astounding receivables, and not all the other payments had to do with rehab loans. So the two items specifically that got moved had to do with... So the two items specifically that got moved had to do with the funding of the Bama Downtown Manager and the Oregon Coast Community College class for small businesses. So those don't really have anything to do with rehab loans. So I moved them out of other expenditure loans up into materials and services, which created an overage. So that's kind of why that happened. The second one, as was noted.
Debbie, we have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, again, it's me. Excuse me for interrupting you. I just want to interrupt you because I want to ask your friend over here to your right, what would you suggest? And where she can put those unusual, let's call them, categories?
I put them in materials and services, if that's okay with you. I will continue doing that.
Yeah, I think materials and services is where we would prefer those expenditures to be. I think you just didn't have enough budget in that line item this year. I mean, overall, the total expenditure budget, you're under budget, just that line item you're...
I'm just trying to help.
I'm sometimes hesitant to change things that my predecessor had because I have a great deal of respect for him, but I think I should just do it in this case.
Well, and I'd like to follow that up, if I may. Is it possible to make that phone call to Mr. Gillette or the organization at some point when you have a question? If we're going to move something, to call the auditors, is that acceptable to do and say, "Hey, we're thinking of doing this. Would you agree with this?"
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We encourage continual communication throughout the year. We'd rather talk about it ahead of time than after the fact. You know, we would like no surprises either direction. So if we have open communication all year long, we can work to minimize that.
Would that create a burden on your department?
No, and they're great. I mean, every time I do call, I get great help. This, part of the reason this happened is also the timeliness issue in had, I was reviewing these after the end of the year, so you can't really come back and do a fix to the budget after June 30th because the year's done. Had this review been done before June 30th, we could have fixed it with a budget transfer. So that's part of the issue as well. And I've been working with the city manager on my workload so that I can do that in the future and not have so many of these.
Great, thanks.
Okay, the second point that was noted was that we had a budget transfer. Some of you that have been through this before, remember, at the end of the year, we typically come with some bunch of small changes. We're going to move this here and hit this here so that we don't have overages. I did have a long list, but in that long list, there were a couple items where I was transferring money out of water operations into water construction to provide budget funding for the Skunna Creek Water Line. That was a lot of money, over $500,000, and it should have been a supplemental budget with a public notice and hearing rather than a budget transfer. So that was just, that's my bad. I just missed that.
And what's the trigger on that, then, so it doesn't happen again?
It's 10% of the budget, basically. The next set of findings is in what's called the SASS 115, and these are the ones I particularly wanted to go over. The first finding was an overstatement of $19,338 in capital outlay and a corresponding understatement in materials and services in the property rehab fund, and that was what I just talked about, the results of the budget overage. The second one was an overstatement of $476,283 in general government expenditures and a corresponding understatement in highways and street expenditures and non-major governmental funds. Basically, what that is, is this $476,000 here, which is shown in highway and streets in our final audit, which is where it's supposed to be, I had it up here in this line, under general government. So this number was in the wrong line on this statement and categorized incorrectly. The number itself is correct, it's just in the wrong place. The next finding is similar, an overstatement of $728,703 in net position restricted for capital projects and a corresponding understatement in net position restricted for urban renewal in the urban renewal general fund. Again, when the audit started, I had this $728,703 up here in the capital projects category, and it should have been down here under urban renewal. So that has been fixed and it's correct in our final statements. I just didn't have it right when the audit started. Again, the number is correct, it's just in the wrong line. An overstatement of $1,091,072 in unrestricted net position and a corresponding understatement of net position restricted for capital improvement in the sewer fund. That is this statement. When the audit began, this 1.3 million, I had $216,000, and the offset was here. I had 1.5 million instead of 451,000. The reason this happened is this capital improvement, restricted for a capital improvement, that's basically the fund balances that we have in our SDC funds. In prior years, the SDC funds were all reported on one page. They were consolidated in the financial report. So the formula that's in here pointed to one-page fund balance. This year, we split that out into three pages so that it shows one page for each fund, and I did not update the formula to pick up all three of those. So that's why it happened. So my $216,000 is actually the fund balance that's in the first SDC fund here, and the other two funds, I just, I didn't pick that. So again, it's, the numbers just are not in the right line item. The final one, an overstatement of $308,608 in unrestricted net position and a corresponding understatement of net position restricted for capital improvements in the water fund is the same situation. In the water fund, we had three SDCs that prior to this year were all reported together as one page. In this statement, they're split out into three pages. So I just didn't update this formula to include all three of them. There's also a comment about the transfers and eliminating internal transfers. We have, let me get to the right page. We have a lot of, quite, I think there are a lot, transfers between our funds. So, for example, in the general fund, we have a transfer out, and some of the money, $15,000 of this $427,000 goes to the villages. Another $52,000 goes to open space, and then there's transfers to other funds. So when you're reporting the individual fund, it's a self-balancing fund, and you have to report that transfer out because it's money coming out of the fund. And then in the villages, you have to report it as a transfer in because it's money coming into the fund. However, when you're combining all of these, and you're going to say, "Okay, I'm going to take all of these funds and make them one on the report," then you're supposed to eliminate it so that you're not showing a transfer in and a transfer out of the same group. So that's what I had not been doing in the past, and so we added this column called eliminations, and so it's netting that out. So again, the net impact is the same, it's just your transfers in is higher and your transfers out is higher than it should be if you're looking at the transfers out of that group rather than the individual fund. And then finally, the last item has to do with the transfers that funds make to the general fund to pay for things like, you know, finance, payroll, HRAP, administration, legal costs, stuff, costs that are expensed in the general fund but are incurred for the whole city. And so other funds help pay for those costs via a transfer mechanism. So in the past, we had recorded all those transfers up here as charges for services. Really, it's, the discussion is, it's not really a charge for a service that the general fund is providing, it's more of an expense allocation. So instead of increasing your revenue for that transfer, you should be decreasing your expense for that transfer. So that's the change here. So I had $515,000 up here. We dropped it to 21 because we took out the charges for services for all those transfers. And then we did a corresponding decrease in the general government expense because we're only going to record, you know, 80% of finance in here instead of 100%. And then we're going to have the rest of the cost show in the department. So again, the numbers are correct, just how you call them and where you put them. And all of these changes, too, I would like to note, most of these changes have to do with the front parts of the audited statement and the full accrual basis, and these numbers don't appear anywhere in our budget process, so they do not affect anything that you would see in the budget statements, except for the budget overage. The rest of them, they're more just financial statement numbers that you never see unless you're looking at the financial statements.
And you're satisfied with all that, Mr. Gillette?
Did I say a thing okay?
Yeah, I would have called them top-side entries instead of front-side entries, but yes, when you're, as you go along throughout the year and you keep the books and records, you're keeping them on the, not on the full accrual basis, and you're keeping the fund statements that you, that are in here but are not the entity-wide statements. It's in getting from the fund statements to the entity-wide statements, you make the so-called top-side entries to get them on a full accrual basis, and that's where most of the issues arose. That's something that happens once a year at the end of the year when you're going through this process of putting together the annual financial report.
One fun thing about government accounting I really don't like is that we have three different accounting rule sets, depending on which page of the statement you're on, and depending on what you're doing. So we have really cash bases when we do our budget reports. We kind of have a modified accrual basis in the fund-level reports and the statements, and then we have full accrual on the front of the statement. So depending on what page you're on, you can handle a transaction differently, and I just think that's just bizarre. But...
I would have to agree with you, Debbie.
But that's the way it is, so...
But those are the rules, yeah.
Question concerning the new tax laws that were passed by Congress. Is there going to be any effect on the cities within that? This is pretty much personal and business.
As far as I can think, there's no specific effect on cities that I can come up with. I will say, I'm not in our tax department. I'm in the assurance side of things, but I've been through a number of the tax seminars. I don't think there's anything in particular that should affect you. Maybe people complaining that they can't deduct their full amount of property taxes on their income statement or something.
Get in line.
But you're probably used to getting complaints about one thing or another anyway, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Debbie, you know, of all reading through this and all the different things, the thing that jumped out at me was the timeliness issue of reviews. Could you speak to that a little bit? And maybe now's not the right time. You need to come back with a plan, but I can understand these mistakes, and they all fit, but the timeliness is the last resort, so to speak, Sid.
So it's, just to be blunt, it's a personal struggle for me because I don't really find errors by looking at the journal entries or looking at the bank statements. I find errors when I'm comparing last year's budget to year-to-date actual or comparing... That's when I find them, during the audit process and the budget process, the work that I do for the reconciliation, that's when I find the errors. And we have, I have very accurate staff, so it's hard for me to get really excited about looking at these when I should. It's more of a squeaky wheel issue, but it's been noted more than once, so I really need to change my thought process on that, I know.
Or the process, because that may not be the right process, so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may address that as well. So if you recall, one of the things we changed when Ron Tierney retired was we did not replace him, but shifted his duties over to Debbie. And in so doing, that also meant that we needed to shift some of the duties that she does from a day-to-day basis to other employees. That has not gone as quickly as we had hoped, and that is something that we have been working on to lighten her load, increase the loads to others so that these things get done on a more timely basis.
However, very recently, it's gone much, much better. I've gotten some real help with the budget, and it's great. I kind of liken this. It's really helped, so...
And is that going to stick around?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Great, good to hear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So you assured us that all those errors wouldn't, we don't see it at the budget level, but I just don't understand how if it's mislabeled in the top-side part of it, how does it not affect the budget at all? I mean, if it's not in the right place, and it's $700,000, $500,000, I mean, an oopsie is, you know, $500,000 is not the same as a $1,500, something else.
So for one example, let's take the SDC funds, okay? In the budget, you see the SDC fund one by one, you see them individually, you see the ending fund balance of them individually, and those are correct. In the financial statements, you see the ending fund balance, but they're grouped. One's restricted for capital, one's unrestricted, one's other things. So it's the grouping within that that we don't have that grouping in the budget.
We just have the end amount.
We just have the end amount, and you know by the fund type whether it's restricted or not.
Okay, so at that level. And then, does our, do the errors that were created cost us as the city more if we were, I don't forget the word, favorable? I don't know what word you used, but if there were no errors, is it cost associated with the errors?
You're talking about the cost of the audit? Yeah, no.
I mean, if there's 50 errors, is the same as there's five errors or zero errors?
If there were 50 errors, maybe we would have to come back and have some kind of a discussion. That is, that hasn't ever happened with our audit of the city.
All right.
And we have a fixed-price contract that, you know, was bid on some time ago.
For, there is X amount of, you're going to help us through that?
I mean, there are some things built into that contract that says, you know, we expect these certain conditions to hold. If they didn't hold, we would have to come back and talk maybe.
Right.
But so far, nothing has risen to that level.
So you're going to, I guess you stick around, see the errors, talk with Debbie, okay, now we fix them, and then now we'll see you next year?
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of thing. So, thank you. And then, something that you struggle with, if it's a thing, is there a personnel attachment to that as far as an employee? And I don't know if that's to be talked about or not. If we're going to talk about, you know, the errors or not, is there something that's going to be noted on as a personnel thing or a position thing or something? I'm sorry, I think you're wonderful.
That's okay.
But at the same time, if it's something that's continually happening and, you know, we need to not have that, how can we, you know, as you said, with Tierney gone and the positions not, you know, and how can we help that not happen? And, you know, so it's just trying to, you know, it's very fine line.
And the answer is yes, sir. There's two parts. There is the part that deals with the employees' evaluation, but one thing I can send you is how we have divided up the duty so you can see that.
Could I ask one more question?
Okay. This might seem like a silly question to you, but it took me hours to read through this because I'm pretty thorough and try to understand what it is that you're trying to tell us. But how long did it take for the audit to take place? And do you do that here physically? Or are things emailed to you and you review them that way? Or how does it process go?
We try to do most of the, well, we divide things into what I call field work. We try to do most of the field work here. We have people on-site in the offices, you know, that can walk down the hall and talk to Debbie or Ron or whoever on the staff is appropriate to talk to. There is a fair amount of work that does go on back in our office, too. It's just because it does take hours to read these things and to put them together. So yes, there's work on both ends, but I'd say the bulk of it happens out here.
They probably have three people, at least three weeks in total, if not four, on-site.
Yeah, we come out twice. We have what we call our interim visit, and then we come out again, what we call final.
Mr. Mayor, if you said, Debbie, you could change things if the review happened before the time. Is there any way to do like a check us up to this point and then like a final, here's the last 20% of something?
And I do do that. I do do that in June, and I look for overages. The problem is if things have been coded in the wrong category, then they don't pop out.
And then you didn't see those two other...
Right, right, right.
Okay.
And then on that, because you mentioned this has been a deficiency, and what's being implemented to remind you to do that?
I don't think it's so much a question of reminding, just getting the time. I mean, it's a yearly process. It happens every year.
Okay, because I thought you said something about it's just something you didn't do or overlook or...
No, it's more time. I don't, I, you know, like a detailed review within the accounts of the transactions that have been coded to capital, I do that after June 30th, and so I find something, I can't do a budget transfer to fix it.
Okay, well, I was getting the sense from the council that we're here to say if you need help.
Yes.
We're here to give you that help if you need it, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Don't hesitate.
Okay.
We want a really good report.
Yeah, this has always been a very supportive environment here. It's not, that's not the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great.
Thanks, thanks very much for having us again. Look forward to seeing you all next year. Have a good...
Thank you. Back to the page. Public hearing. Do I have a script?
Skip whatever I don't want to be.
Do you need this one?
No. Keep me on track if I do it wrong. Okay. It is now 7:12 PM. The continued public hearing is now open to accept public comment on the proposed vacation of a portion of Northwest Mass Street. ORS 271120 provides, and I'm not going to read it again because we've already read it. Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. After the staff presentation, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Already has a report.
Your Honor, Council, I'm just going to tell you that the updated language is shaded in the staff report, so you don't have to read the whole thing again. If you just looked at highlighted sections. In short, we now have written consents from all parties, so the issue of having to pay damages because consent was not obtained goes away. We also don't have to hire an assessor to determine if there's a substantial impact because consents have been obtained. The staff report still included a recommendation from planning and public works and legal that, you know, the finding that's necessary, that it's not adverse to the public, I'm sorry, the... Let's see. Yeah, the finding is whether the public interest will be prejudiced by the vacation. So, if you find that the public interest will not be prejudiced, you can approve it. If you find that the public interest will be prejudiced by the vacation, you cannot approve it. So, it just comes down to that. And again, the only action you would take this evening would be to direct, if you believe the findings are met. We do not have objections by majority. We have consents, so it's really only about whether or not you believe the, you know, the adverse impact on the public. And if you find that you want to go forward, then you would give us direction to bring back an ordinance vacating the street. And I think we, again, there are no special rules in place, so the map that's in your packet that shows how the property, the right-of-way will be divided appears to be accurate.
I don't have anyone's names on my list here. Is there any member of the audience who should provide comment on this matter? Hearing none. Motion to close hearing, close record.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. After record close, deliberate and vote. Please address consents, objections, public interest prejudice, in whole or part, any reservations.
Mr. Mayor, I think the summary was right on by city attorney. I would shorten it even further and say the risk to the city has been eliminated, removed. The land, once this goes through, is back on the tax rolls, thus benefiting all taxing districts. And best yet, the responsibility for this vacant land goes to the owners, the new owners, and they would treat it as their own, hopefully a lot better than the city has.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to direct staff to bring back ordinance to vacate this street.
Second.
Okay, just so we're clear, Northwest Mass, north of Northwest 26th Street.
Right.
Okay. Motion to second, discussion?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I see, you know, staff does not suggest that we vacate this street, and I do not believe it's in the best public interest. You know, that's, I think, 6,000 square feet, and I could think of a dog park that could go in there pretty soon, and it's in the public property, you say no, but because...
I would disagree, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, this, I mean, if I can. I mean, then you have property owners who, you know, touch it but don't get any piece of it, and it was, in the findings, it said that it was, you know, the public, the right-of-way open space is lost. You know, the setback also applies to three lots with property corners merely touching the proposed vacations. I mean, there's many things in the findings that suggest not to do it. So, and then I don't know if the one property owner was, had three different people, and then in the agenda that I have, if one person's signing for the three different people, I didn't know if that was still clear or not, so...
All the, all the consents were obtained by the party that had three.
Oh, okay. So, so that, so let go of that, but, you know, I, I don't know. So, that's me.
Mr. Anderson?
Go ahead, Judy.
Oh, Mr. Anderson.
Well, he spoke first, so.
The property, it says stays public street. Is that currently public property, the one that's adjacent to, I guess, Northwest 26th? Is that city property? City street?
Well, this, this is public right-of-way. It's not a separate-deeded lot.
No, I'm not talking about the one we're talking about. I'm talking about the one that's, if you look on the picture, that's under that.
Just to the south, yeah. That was not included as part of the request to vacate.
Okay, but...
So, it remains a city street. That portion remains. And one of the questions that was raised during the initial hearing was, why wasn't that included in this request? Well, that's not what was requested to be initiated.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and just to help clarify, the way this property came about was deeded for a street, not purchased by the city. A street, not a sidewalk, not a dog park, not a corner lot or a park, you know, a street. And so, the applicants who put forth said, you know, they checked with everybody, did anybody want a street in here? Meaning, public works, you know, and went beyond. It doesn't show up in any of our master plans, so it just sits there, collects garbage, quite frankly. And I think we have more of these through the city, because it's an old plat. Somebody in their wisdom, when they platted the city, put it there, and we haven't used it. So, I think there's a responsibility of the city to quit letting the blackberries grow, and that hasn't happened, and let's get it back. So, back onto the tax rolls pays for, you know, the city will get money, the school district, everybody else, rather than just sitting there actually costing the city money with any kind of maintenance. And quite frankly, everybody who's touching that property gets the property. There's, what, one, two, three?
There's four, but there's another house that touches it. I mean, not everybody who's touching it is getting something.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, let's not have a discussion here on this. All right, anyone else? I'll ask for attention, and I'll give it to you, but we're not doing a work session. Okay, roll call, please. Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
No.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone involved. And Mr. Appel, thank you for your good work on that. Okay, ordinances, oh, Lord, ordinance, no? Oh, that's right, we skipped. Thank you for keeping me honest. Okay, special order of business, right? Appointment to Parks and Rec Board, Barbara Hahn.
Yeah, will you?
Okay.
Mayor Williams?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Williams and I separately interviewed Ms. Hahn for appointment to the Parks Board. I think she would be a, an asset to the board, and I would move to appoint Barbara Hahn to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I have a question. It looked like in the packet that there potentially could have been a second page. Was there? Are we missing some information?
Whatever it was, it was good.
It was good, no matter, right, okay.
We are, we're getting overqualified applicants.
I don't have any of that.
Okay, I was just curious. It just looked like if there were arrows pointing, and there was nothing there.
Oh, and we didn't get that either.
That's right.
Yeah, she kind of explained what the missing information was.
But it, nothing made that I needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Regatta Park deed restriction.
I suppose this is mine. You have just a very brief report, which tells you I, well, what I did was I talked to attorneys that handled the deed restrictions for the villages. We have a relationship with them because we have an association, and they helped us when we acquired that property. And they basically gave me an estimate of, you know, $750,000 to determine whether or not it's doable, and then $3,000,000 to actually file the litigation if it is doable. Assuming there's no opposition, there wouldn't really be any additional cost. If there is opposition, then we could be facing additional costs. Again, I'm not, you know, an expert in declaration of covenant restrictions and deed restrictions, and this firm is. And so, that was their off-the-cup, you know, estimate of what it would take. It's not a lot of money, but it is not currently budgeted, probably not budgeted in parks. We have outside counsel expense, we could use that, and there was a suggestion that we use TRT money if it's legally permissible, and the auditors are okay with that. And then also the issue of possibly requesting, the requister in this case was another governmental entity and perhaps asking for contribution from them, so...
Were you given any, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, any indicators it wouldn't be time to cut bait, or just say...
I think, I think the first $750,000 will determine if it's possible. And then, once we hire them to actually go ahead and file the litigation, we could, if we get a lot of opposition, we could, of course, end it.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want this an open-ended process on yours, hey, you're not going to get this, so let's stop.
I have $10,000 worth of contracting authority. I don't want to spend $10,000 on this. I'd like to spend more than, say, $3,750, maybe, you know, 60, okay, postage.
Well, but Mayor, what I heard you is a two-step, $750 or so, the estimate, to find out whether it's plausible to do something easy and slick, including ignoring it, you So, I guess I'm, I thought, I read this as a two-stage, the $750 or $700, to get that analysis, then we decide whether to go the next step, and that could cost us 3,000, additional $3,000.
Right, but my concern is, once we take that step, things do come up, and that's where I just want to be able to say, something we didn't plan for.
But I would think we would, the $700 work would help us decide what kind of resistance there might be there, if any. Is that right?
Good by me.
I move to authorize the city attorney to proceed with the $750 worth of legal services to determine whether we can remove this deed restriction from Regatta Park.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, I guess we're spending, so roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Lincoln City Police Facility Project, budget discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
While they're coming up, let me introduce this, if that's okay. So, the purpose of this tonight is twofold. One is to establish a budget for the, for the proposed police building, and the second is to schedule a time, sometime within the next two to three weeks, preferably by the end of February, when we can bring back some ideas to you. We have been going through a process that's very similar to the process that I've used with our department heads, especially when I first came on, which was coming up with the preliminary ideas based upon a needs assessment of the building. And that has proceeded well. We've gained great information from our officers, as well as from the public, as to what the needs of this building would be, and we're quite comfortable with what has been discussed with you. Now, the second part of that now is bringing things back into a little bit of reality, which is the money, and where that comes from, or and how much we should budget for that. I'm going to let these guys talk about the bulk of this, but I want to mention just a couple of things that are important. We have been working off an idea of a $10.5 to $11 million budget up to this point. They will discuss a little bit more that, based on the needs analysis, what we're looking at would exceed that amount. That budget is in due large part to the source of the financing for the debt, which is the transient room tax that is allowed by our charter to be used on capital facilities such as this. That will dictate much of what the budget will ultimately be, because we want to be able to use those funds, but still keep enough in that revenue and forecasted for the future that if there's a dip in the economy, if there are other projects that you have in mind, we still have some funds that are available to do that. In other words, we don't want to take it up to the limit. So, with that, these gentlemen are going to talk a little bit about where we are with this and what we think we can accomplish.
I'd like to jump in just real quick, because you said something that reminded me of a question I'd asked last time we were together, was have you spoken to any of the rank and file? And the question was, no, they just said they're happy, couldn't believe they're going to get a new building. And I wanted to hear, what did the officers, individuals or officers?
Officers.
Yeah.
Well, all the employees, officers, dispatchers, support staff, all employees of the police department.
I didn't hear anything about what they were saying their needs were, and I was just hoping we might hear a little bit about that. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I do want to hear what the rank and file has to say about this building.
Absolutely, and I think some of that information will come tonight, and then a lot of that information will come to the, through the work session that we need to schedule within the next two to three weeks.
Okay, great. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
And then, I wanted to transgress a little bit very quickly. I believe it was about a month ago, I came forward asking for permission to hire an owner's representative. We did get that person under contract, so I wanted to introduce to you David Dwyer, sitting back here from Clash Group, who is representing the city's interest in this venture. So, he made the trip up here to meet you all, and if you have any questions specific to him and his contract, and what he'll be doing for us. His next current project is drafting the request for proposals based upon qualifications for our general contractor, general manager, so...
Great.
Quickly at work at that.
Great, welcome.
That's the missing element for this whole, whole thing that we're working on at the moment.
Okay.
As city manager indicated, I did want to clarify a point in my council communication to you on the first page. I did mention that decision was made to finance the project with a revenue bond using transient room tax revenues dedicated to the capital facility. What I didn't clarify, it was in the amount that was according to law or our city charter, and city manager did that for us. So, I think rather than getting into the numbers right away, I'll turn this over to Ian, and we'll let him take you through that discussion, and then I'll try and wrap everything around and stuff, and go from there.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ian Gilbert. I'm with FFA Architecture and Interiors out of Portland. Great to see you again. My goal here today is to present to you what, basically the findings that we have from our budget recommendation, as well as what steps we're taking to make sure that the building is in alignment with, with those budget expectations, and then talk a little bit about... and then talk a little bit about how we ensure that the architecture reinforces flexibility for the future. I will start to say that in the twenty years that I have been in architecture, much of that has been working on public facilities. And on all those projects that I have worked on, at some point in a budget discussion, there's a particular piece of architecture that is referenced. It's this. I wanna make sure that everyone is clear that we will not be providing this level of architecture for Lincoln City. We actually have staff members on our team who have been to this facility and they are specifically charged with making sure that what we do is appropriate for Lincoln City and is not the Taj Mahal. What we are targeting this facility to be are the goals that you have listed, that, working with you and with the police staff, the goals that came out of our work session with you, those are what we're targeting here. Specifically, we're looking for a stronger connection between the police force and the community. The one that has maybe the most, strongest sort of budget connection is the functional, sustainable, modern and resilient. Project should also highlight community resources, materials and character in the design. Should be respectful and approachable atmosphere while meeting safety and security needs. The building should reflect the changing workforce with flexible work environments that can adapt to changes in technology and policing, as well as attract and retain award-winning staff and staff should be proud to go to work there. So, when, as we're developing budget numbers, these are the things that we're keeping in mind. To talk through our process of helping develop a budget number, we began by looking at comparable facilities both throughout the country as well as in our own experience, working within the region. In the comparable facilities that we have found, we've adjusted those for time relative to when they were built and their location, as to where they were built and what it means to do work in 2018, 2019, here in Lincoln City. So, the numbers that are up on the screen here are across the board, again, all across the country. The one that you'll notice the most, which is the facility that's listed as six hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot, that has a detention facility, that's a good indication of why you do not wanna have a detention facility in your current police station. They're costly to build and they're very costly to run. But basically-
Excuse me, holding cells are different than detention facility.
Absolutely. Detention facilities are a prison and they require kitchens and meals and outdoor areas for prisoners and things like that. That is not what you have here. So the average across that is four hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. We then took that number to our partner in, out of Phoenix, who does these types of facilities all over the nation. We also took the number to our cost estimator, who is part of our team, and adjusted accordingly. Everyone was in agreement that that was a reasonable number, not incredibly high and not incredibly low, but it's about mid-range. And so just as a, a graphic representation of that, we're sort of on the lower end of average, sort of in the middle there. And when I say that four thirty-five a square foot, that is applied to the building's square footage, but it also includes the site costs. So when we say it's four thirty-five a square foot, that includes all the work that we will be doing onsite as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just wanna interrupt you just for a second. Is that, that, does that include the soft cost or not?
No, it does not.
Okay, I didn't think so, thank you.
Those soft costs generally run approximately thirty percent.
Right. And that is a number that we generally provide as an estimate, but the soft costs generally come from the city side. Those are your fees, our fees, and other aspects that are carried in your budget. So what that means, originally, our first round of what we call programming, which is the size of the facility, the things that need to go in the facility, was between twenty-six and twenty-seven, seven thousand square feet. So, when you do the math there, you get just a construction budget of eleven point three million. When you add in the estimated thirty percent soft cost, you're at fourteen point seven. And in early conversations both with the chief as well as the city manager, we determined that we needed to see what we could do to get it more aligned with the discussed budget at times. So this gives you an overall of the program totals that we had at the original program. And what you see represented here are the individual spaces in different departments. And so, police administration, patrol, these are the individual spaces that are taken into account. When we started to make adjustments, we got very selective and very picky about what things were reduced and/or what things were removed. So, to go from this to the lighter blue areas, which I apologize are difficult to see, essentially making reductions to coffee and storage space, miscellaneous patrol areas, removing some juvenile lounge and juvenile toilet areas, a couple of the adult holding cells in the DRE. And then, in the overall, in the other areas of dispatch, common areas and criminal investigations, we made reductions by reducing some of the dispatch area, the lobby, building maintenance, some of the public toilets, the fitness area, we reduced the size of the multipurpose community room. Copy work, storage was reduced, the physical, forensic examination bay was reduced, evidence areas and then general evidence. These were at the recommendation of our expert out of Phoenix. And, once we did that, we reduced the building's square footage to about eighteen thousand five hundred, or just a little bit over. And the required site area decreased slightly because we didn't need as much public parking to accommodate the multipurpose room. That was really the driver for the amount of public parking we were providing was the amount of space, seats basically in the multipurpose room.
Excuse me again.
Yes, please.
Could you say that again, I'm sorry, just, I could, there was other noise and I couldn't hear what you just said. I'm just curious how you got from your last, from the initial square footage to the eighteen five, seven, seven?
So the light colored areas here, there, sort of throughout these, are where we made the reductions. And so, on this slide, it's a little bit within dispatch, the lobby area. I think the biggest hits, I think the biggest takeaways are the removal of the fitness room, the reduction of the multipurpose room, and then some general trimming of the other areas throughout. But those are the big ticket items.
And the way we got to the eighteen thousand five hundred square foot area is taking in what was originally mentioned as the potential budget for this project of ten point five million. So we kinda worked it backwards. We took ten point five million, did the computation on the square footage, which dictated eighteen five square foot. And then from there, figuring out what to reduce to get you to that number.
Right.
So what you reduced are some of the things that were listed as high priorities?
Right, and so-
The reduction in the lobby space, the reduction of not having the workout center on, on the property and-
Right, and those are areas that we have identified as things we really wanna get back.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
As I mentioned, these are the areas that we wanna try to get back into the project. The first two, the chief and I have discussed at length. The last one is one that anytime anybody builds a new facility and you go back and talk to them a year later, it's the one thing they've asked for. That we wish we'd given more space for meetings. And so, we removed, one of the things we removed was the conference room for the investigative unit. And so I think that as a goal, we should try to get some of that back in. If it's not there, then it's a general conference room that everybody can use. And so by making that reduction, that got us back to where we need to be, a little bit less. So, any questions relative to that before I talk a little bit about flexibility?
Our memo just talks about the addition, or the recovery of the square footage to the community room and also including the, the fitness cardio element of the locker room. But you mentioned a, a conference room. Would that add to the cost that's mentioned in the memo?
I would say that the first two are the highest priority and those are the things that I would aim your budget for. The last one, we will see what we can do relative to the design of the building and try to squeeze it in.
And I have a question about the fitness room.
Yeah.
Speaking from personal experience, those are some of the most expensive coat hangers you can buy. I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna be asked to pay for fitness equipment also if this room gets approved?
That'd be, yes.
And at what point do we pull the plug and say, it's not being used? Unless it's two people being used, using it, is, is pretty much my experience in any business that has these things. We're already giving free membership at the community center, do we not?
Correct. What we're creating is a, a better environment for the officers to work out in, it's right in the locker room. So for one, they don't have to make the extra trip. When they get off work, to get rid of their uniform, go to the community center, which is the place where community members work out. The officers, some officers have issues or safety concerns working out with some of the people that they may have just got off shift with and dealt with in maybe a not-so-friendly manner. And it's just, you get off work, work out, and then you're done, rather than get off work, change clothes, go to a community center, change clothes again to work out, shower. It's, it's a lot more convenient this way. We're also creating a better atmosphere, I believe, for fitness. Digress a little bit, we've, several officers or employees, not just officers but employees, have embarked upon a base fit program, which is a fitness, nutrition, six-month program sponsored in partnership with CIS Insurance. And we've got twenty-one members of our department who have voluntarily engaged in this program. It's a six-month program. They've also got money involved in that, if, which they'll get a, get back upon their successful completion. But we're just, we are incorporating a sense of fitness and nutrition that's vital to the officers and having this fitness room right there, I think, just continues that message that we're trying to send, that your health and well-being is of our interest and we certainly wanna give you all the tools available for you to do that.
Right, and I'm in absolute agreement of that. But again, I just wanna, I, I'm hoping someone would, if we approved this, that it would be overseen and say, okay, nobody's using this, let's find something else to do with it.
Oh, absolutely, sure, and that's part of the flexibility aspect of this building. If it's not being used, then, you know, we take that equipment out and use that space for something else.
And is that equipment in this budget, or just the space for construction?
That would be in the fixtures, furnishings and equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? To, to be sort of neutral, have you, have you asked the both, the men and the women officers about this gym location and idea, concept? Is it appropriate for them both? I know we live in a co-ed world, but I was just wondering if, if the women officers have had input as well?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
And I will add to that, that of, in my experience, most police facilities have them, include, as do fire facilities, mainly because people who are in those job descriptions require being physically fit and active. And all the facilities that we did tour as part of our programming process had fitness areas.
Thank you. My question was pretty straightforward and simple. Do you have a commitment by the officers and the staff to use it? I mean, are they, would?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It's not like a January first re-
Right, yeah, that, that New Year's resolution that goes away about the middle of the month.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Staying on that topic, and I, I guess, being here longest, I remember our experience with the police union and health issues, where we even paid bonuses to be healthy. And then we lost in arbitration for, you know, trying to, you know, require that. I, I find it a little insulting and I, I'm willing to get past it, but now to include at this price, you know, of fitness, especially when we have five fitness facilities in, in and near this city now, that we could probably give each of our employees a coupon and have them do it. And we own one of them, we the city own one of them. So I'm, I'm a little troubled with, and I, I understand times change and I understand different employees. And I, I applaud the new attitude, but I still can't help but recall the less-than willingness to be healthy and have a healthy regimen. And so it, it was on my list to remove first and let you scramble with convincing me to bring it back, so. Thank you. I, I'm not there yet, just so you know.
Yeah, and that's part of what I was asking for with the, the rank and file input on these kind of things. I wanna, I wanna hear it, that it's gonna be used. Appreciate it. I just can't, I can't imagine getting off work after a ten or twelve-hour shift and, yeah, now I'm gonna go work out. And I just, more power to them. I hope they do and relieve some of that stress, yeah, absolutely, all right.
Another question.
Yes, please.
You mentioned the community room, is that also the multipurpose room?
Same, yes.
Because you said it would be used possibly for hosting regional training of some sort for the police in the city. I was wondering about parking, how are you going to find parking for all those people if you have fifteen to fifty people? And then, also, it was mentioned as an emergency operations center. And I know we have hospitals and fire departments and we have our own dispatch. Would that twelve hundred square feet be appropriate or functional enough to operate as an emergency center?
Yeah, I think that's why, one of the reasons why we wanna push it back up to full capacity is to be able to accommodate all of those functions. Generally, the, the size needs come, or the way that the room is often sized is, comes out of the training need. And that usually drives the overall square footage more than potentially the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts coming in for a weekend afternoon. Generally, when you size for the training needs and you've covered your size for the EOC, but that's one of those conversations that we still need to have with your emergency management staff to make sure that it's planned accordingly to accommodate the EOC needs.
You mentioned training like up to twelve people and I think we have, what, twenty-six officers?
They, they all don't train at the same time. Somebody's still gotta be out on the street minding the store while the other ones train.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so we train about half, half and half.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
That was another one, so I, my question is gonna be on the flexibility of these rooms. And it's hard to imagine it's, you know, it's not gonna be the Hilton Hotel with doing conventions. So, it's gonna be a lot of downtime and, and that's what troubles me, the downtime. So I, I'm trying to think of, in your designs, is there flexible walls or something where during most of the time, it's used for something else but can be, you know, flexed out to accommodate these bigger groups? The other reminder I have and one of the problems with being here longer is, didn't we do the same thing in the maintenance yard, just to the east of this, this building? The emergency room disaster center, big conference room, of which we put in a lot of computers and, you know, stuff there as well. So I'm, I'm trying to think of why we can't, some, I, I understand loving to have all-in-one space, but being able to use other city facilities not that far away, just right across the creek.
That particular building is inadequate for an emergency operations center? We've put some money into it, an infrastructure to it, but the infrastructure that was placed in there after the building was built, we're kinda adjusting or trying to accommodate that function. And it just didn't have the data line support and other infrastructure. Also, it is not built as an essential building component or standard. So, if something happens, that building may not be standing where the other one would be. So if something happens, that building may not be standing where the other one would be.
To answer your first question about the chance for operable partitions and things like that, it's definitely something to consider. The one thing that we're always looking for is what space do we pair that with, right? And what do we open up those walls to? More often than not, the rooms are subdivided, as you see very often, so that you can get smaller uses out of them. Generally, the, most of the facilities that I've seen, I should say, it depends on what the community needs are. Often, those, like, I think, believing can be, we toured their facility and they have courts in there most of the time. And then it's training the rest of the time, or as well as their EOC, your courts are elsewhere. So that wouldn't be the case. So generally, they do get used, is all I can tell you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess I would ask you, and I have full confidence.
Sure.
But, you know, I see a lot of empty buildings around the country, around Oregon, that were used heavily once, and they're standing empty now. They're just not functional anymore for whatever purpose. So I, in behalf of Counselor Ward, you know, I'd like to throw out the flexibility concept again. I'd like to know when that conference room, multipurpose room, doesn't meet expectation of use. And add that, the dispatch area, dispatch center area. When those two things go away or get greatly reduced, how and what is going to go into those areas?
Sure.
Because I think that's how, when you lay out, I, I'm going to ask that, because I think those are, you know, and a weight room, if that's in there too. If they, if they have to change uses, what's the most practical use that will go into those areas? And that might change your setting of where you place some of that, that stuff is.
Yeah. And that's actually a great segue into the slide up here. But I would say relative to that comment is that as agencies grow, usually the thing that drives change within a building is just an increase in population. So generally, the staff grows, and so fundamentally, you're trying to find every nook and cranny to put somebody. I've talked with agencies, actually more municipal agencies, where they have staff in janitors' closets, because that's the only place they can put them. So designing a building to be flexible, there's several different strategies that we look for. One of the biggest and most obvious is to keep the building form or shape really simple and straightforward. You don't want to add a lot of angles and curves and things like that that make it hard to modify over time. You also want to look for a very simple structural layout, where you don't want a lot of bearing walls in the middle of your floor plate. If you do, you can't move them. They're stuck there. So we look for column spacing and things like that that are ultimately flexible over time, where you just have to tear down a wall and move it. And that's relatively easy construction to do. The other aspect about flexibility is providing as much open office space as we can. There's several reasons relative to that, is that current thinking in workplace design is that we all work and operate differently. We also all work on very different tasks. And so we need, where some people would say, well, everything needs to be open office, or other people will say, everything needs to be a private enclosed office. We look for variety in that, so that if I'm in an open office environment and I need a task that's focused, I can step into a small conference room that's maybe only suited for one or two people. And so as much as we can push into open office, then as the nature about workstations changes, many of us have spent a lot of our time in very large cubicles, maybe eight by eight or eight by 10. Those sizes come out of a day when we had a lot of paper and a lot of file storage. Most workstations now are closer to eight foot by six or even six foot by four. And so over time, you can then shrink the size of your workstations to accommodate the smaller ones and then gain more space for staff. So those are some pretty obvious ones. As we've been laying out the buildings on the site, we've been looking for logical places to expand the building over time, so that you are not, in 20 years, finding that you have to go build a new facility or find a new one. So that's been a part of the equation as we try to cram everything onto the limited site that we have. Lastly, is looking at flexible systems. That goes for interior partitions, which there are several, we've talked about this before, but partition systems that allow you to unbolt a wall, pick it up and move it, versus having it be studs and drywall that has to be speckled and painted every time you try to do something. In addition, we look for flexible mechanical and electrical systems that can be added on simply or only need to be rebalanced, don't have to be completely reworked every time you change a room. So taking these ideas back to the original conversation about the meeting space as well as the fitness room. If we've done our job right and we've left the floor plate fairly open, then if those rooms become not usable or not used over time, then it's simple to move the walls, take them down, and reconfigure it for workspace. Any other questions relative to the flexibility question? I just want to speak one, make one more comment relative to, Mayor, your question about hearing from staff. So relative to that, what we've done so far, talking with staff, is that we have asked them about their needs and what types of facilities need to be within the building. So that was our step one. So we did really in-depth interviews relative to that. The second exercise that we have done since I was here last time is that, following the Sustainable Design Shiret, which we had with some of the counselors represented here, we then met, took the second half of that day to meet with staff, or sorry, officers, to talk about their vision for the facility and the types of work environments that resonate most with them and just who they are as an agency, what separates them from everybody else. And so we'll report back to you on those findings when we meet with you for your work session.
Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
One more. Just one more.
Sure.
Okay. My question is, of all these numbers and budgets for the square footage, which, again, will get us to the place where we can include at least two of those three items?
I believe the chief has listed 11,500,000 in your memo.
I'm sorry, what?
11,500,000.
I thought it was six.
Say it's six. 11 million, 11.6 million.
I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Yeah. And that would add in approximately 2,000 square feet that is needed to recover those elements that we're trying to.
So are we going to talk, go the next level to finance? Or is, or is that include, are you done? Or is there more coming?
So I was just going to briefly mention the finance piece in talking with Debbie Mamonie to find out what it is that we can afford to build out to. And what she indicated, and I think I even softened the number that she provided me, was that if a bond amount was secured for 11,500,000 with the same assumptions, which would be 4% interest rate over 30 years, that the annual payment would be 665,046 dollars. Putting that into the fund balance for capital projects and even anticipating another $200,000 for other city projects at no time during the 30-year bond, as we can currently forecast, would that balance go below 405,000 in your reserve balance? So we're certainly not expending all of those dollars in that fund balance.
Mr. Mayor? There's also assumptions that you, that the financing really is based on quite a few assumptions that we're pretty comfortable with, but they are assumptions. The first is a 4% interest rate. We're pretty comfortable that that's where we could come in at. The second is a 3% increase in the transient room tax. What you'll see on that.
The revenue.
Yes.
Increase in the tax.
Yes, increase in revenue, which is essentially increased due to growth. What you see in that is that the first year, it drops your total difference between what is coming in from that part of, that's approved by our charter, and the debt to down about 65,000 to 70,000 dollars. Then over time, if the 3% holds, that, of course, will build back up. Now, the thing that we wanted to make sure of is that, is that we, what happens if there's a downturn in the economy? Similar to what we went through a few years ago. And, and we've been taking a look at those numbers, and we still feel pretty comfortable that, that our fund balance in these areas would not drop low enough that, that we would not be able to meet our debt service plus be able to have a buffer for either other projects or to absorb a downturn in the economy.
Just want to ask you another numbers question, then. Would we, is there, is it a good idea? Tell me no if it's not, but to, to fund the building at that really comfortable level for a bond at 10,500,000, and then the difference between that and 11,600,000 from other funding?
The less we have to actually bond, the better it is, because the total cost in the end will be less. And so whatever budget you establish tonight, we will come back with different ideas and different options on what the amount would be that could be bonded versus what we might have in reserves that could be used for that instead of through a bond. So there's also things that look into the soft costs. Are there areas that, that we could see some reduction in those? So the real key tonight is the budget, whether that's 10 and a half million or 11, 11.6 million. I wouldn't go above that if I had to make a recommendation. But we will come back not only with the information from the architect and our owner's rep, but also with information from our finance department on what we think we can, changes that we can make either, so to reduce as much as possible the amount we'd have to bond.
Okay, thank you. And may I ask a second question? Sorry.
Would I stop you?
I've got to know these things. Okay, after we settle this, can we meet the owner's rep up here and speak with them?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm ready.
All right.
I guess, it's only because I don't have, have in front of me. But you went the way I wanted to do. What kind of tolerance factors have you weighed in on these? Because again, you know, we were definitely here during 2008, 2012. And things don't always come in. So we were pleased to have the reserves we had, and so I'm sensitive to that. The, the 665,000, you know, I like, given the fact that if, if you've got, built in the 200,000 plus for other capital improvements. And, and I guess my concern is, are you driving those two numbers, the 865,000, based on the revenue we're, from TRT that we're allowed to have now in this category? What if I asked you to go back to 2008 and average? What would I have as far as those margins? If you still spent the 665,000, you know, towards?
I'll have to come, I'll have to come back with those numbers. I don't think I can give those to you off the top of my head, but I'll have to come back.
And I, that's why I apologize for, we don't have, have that. But the other is, you know, I guess, I'm not as comfortable with the 4% because it takes us a while to get to the bond stage. And, you know, rates have been moving up quarterly, not monthly. And so the tolerance in those kind of factors. But I, the model is, I like, I like having a cushion. I think we need the cushion, the 200,000 or so, without adversely affecting the, you know, ending balances that we need in there too. So, you know, if you could get me comfortable there, and that, or, you know, have, is, if you looked at that, or did you just take what we're getting now in TRT and starting from this point and doing a 3%?
We did, we did look backwards to look at what has been the average and what happens. And the chief is right. There may be times where it drops low enough, but we think we would have the reserves to be able to pick up that. But I can give you more information on that.
Well, except we want to move ahead tonight, though. You know, that's why I don't want to.
If I was to give a recommendation, and the chief will probably disagree with my recommendation on this, but my recommendation would be to stay at the 10 and a half million dollars and then come back at that work meeting and say, this is what you get and this is what you don't get. Now, if you added another 1.5 million dollars, this is what could be added on to it. It's always easier to me to add money to something than it is to take something away from it. So if it was my recommendation, I would say stay at the 10 and a half million, come back to the work meeting, see what you get, recognizing that you can add more. It's always easier to add more than it is to take away.
Mr. Mayor? I didn't. Okay. I just want to say that I thought that's sort of what we just did here, is finding out what that other 1.6 million would provide, which would be two of the three items.
I think there's a lot more work that we can do. The one thing that we haven't done with, with our architects is that we haven't gone through the soft costs in detail to look at what options are there. So again, I would much prefer the idea of starting low to build up if we need to rather than starting high, and then how do we cut another 300,000? How do we cut another 200,000, something like that? So I think there are more options than just what we talked about to get us to that point where those two things can come back into it.
And so I appreciate the city manager's conservative approach. However, some of the issues that come along with that is the architect is going to have to do the work twice as far as starting the initial sketch layout things. So if we prove a budget for 10 and a half million, they're going to draw towards 2 and a half million or 10 and a half million. And then if we decide to increase it later on down the road to the additional 1.6, then all that work is done for naught, and then he's got to have to redo all that work again. And that work also includes programming options that we're going to bring back to the council so council can make some decisions on, you know, do you want all of part A? Or, you know, option A, or you want what piece from option A, what piece from option B, and maybe a little bit of C, and then combine it all together. But the architects really need a number to draw to and to plan for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Find it out.
Okay. So instead of saying that, like, 11.6 would be a firm number, could we use that as a not to exceed and please try and make it less? Is that a compromise, which?
Well, whatever number you come up with, that's, do not exceed that number.
I get it, but you know what I mean. You know.
Okay.
You know. Okay. And I just had, the second thing is, or the fifth or sixth or wherever I meant. The one-half percent for art of this total building. Again, I just want to say that we could build that into some structural pieces, such as metal brackets for beams, if there are such a thing in your design. Artistic scuppers, stormwater features, wind sculpture, artistic landscape design and artwork. And we are the glass center of the coast. So how about including art glass where we need glass dividers? For instance, in the entryway. And that would reduce the costs of those particular items, but it would be including the art. And of course, then we'd be working closely with the arts committee, of which we have one. And I just think we can reduce some of, not a lot, but some of the cost for some of the structural things that you need to add in there anyway and accomplish the art of that money that comes from this building.
Yeah, I would say that generally, it's a, it's not usually a reduction, but a sharing of the cost for a particular item. So by example, the front door might have more embellishment or carving or something like that that's working with an artist. Generally, you're paying Um, generally you're, you're paying for it in some way, but if it's just shared with the one or the half percent for art, then yes.
Council, Walkie?
Um, my question was, what's the difference between the 11.5 and the 11.6?
I think it's a misspeak by the architect.
Oh. So do we need 11.5 or do we need 11.6?
11.6.
I'm sorry, just a little bit louder.
11.6.
Yeah. I'm not so confident that our TRTs are going to go up. Um, I, I still need to talk to my accountant about the impact this tax bill is going to have on deductions on first and second homes and what that might do because a full, if I've got my numbers right, a full third of our housing stock is second owners. And I don't know that we're going to see anyone converting to BRDs because it's not possible anymore. And, uh, I just don't, I'm not sharing that same enthusiasm that we're going to have an increase in this. So I'm, I'm not going to be too much in favor of spending more at this point, but that's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So I looked up police stations in Oregon, I don't know, you know, um, by comparison, size wise, how, what's the cost? And, um, I found Canby did one, 36,000 square feet in 2012, and they did it for $9 million, which adjusted for inflation is 9.595. And they did it through urban renewal and they have a staff of 30. So I know, well, at least once, we can do, you know, what's our square footage, 27,000? You know, right now, or, I mean, so 27 for 11.6 now, where it's been done, you know, 36,000 square feet for nine and a half. Um, and, you know, we're trying to find the money to build the thing, which we don't, we don't have an architecture, right? We haven't had a plan yet. We're just, we're just saying it would cost this much now. And it's increasing, every meeting we go to, it's increasing the amount. You know, it was 10 million, now we're at 11.6, you know, and just, you know, to go from 10.5 to 11.6 over the 30 years, that's another, you know, $734,000 that we're going to, you know, with the interest. So, um, or now a little bit more, you know, so I just, you know, I struggle really, I really struggle with the location of the place, you know, that, why does it have to be there? It's, it's very, it's on the hillside, you know, there's a lot of limitations there, you know, you have the, the pinch points, you know, the two different accesses, you're going to cut a road in to Third Street, you're going to cut a road in out to East Double Lake Road or, I don't know, West Double Lake. I mean, there's just a lot of things there that just are if this, 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 3% here, you know, over the course of things, if, we won't go below $400,000. I'm just not comfortable at all.
So I could speak a little bit to, um, your initial comment, which is Canby's facility, which is one of the facilities that we toured. Um, that facility was built in 2012, so that was six years ago. Um, generally what we have seen even within the last two years is significant rise in construction costs, and that's based out of the shortage of labor that comes from the downturn in the economy. So when, through 2008 and 2012, a significant amount of people left, um, the workforce, both in architecture, but specifically in construction fields. And so, um, that project in particular enjoyed being built right at the end of the recession, and so their dollars were ideal for, in a bidding climate. Um, in addition to that, uh, there's a difference between building, uh, in the middle of the valley to building out here in, um, Lincoln City, specifically anywhere on the coast. Um, the types of construction out here are generally more residential than they are commercial. Um, and you end up having to pull trades from the valley and you have to pay for that cost. Uh, I was, um, we're using the contractor, uh, on another project who's also working on the hospital out here. Um, and I talked with their mechanical engine, uh, mechanical estimator, um, probably a couple of days ago. And by comparison, they talked about a mechanical system that would run you $100 a square foot, um, in the valley is going to cost you $140 a square foot out here at the coast. So those are, those are real numbers. Um, so those are the two factors that apply to where we are. And the, the square footage that we're suggesting today is 18,500 to meet the, um, current budget number. And then relative to the site constraints, um, it is a challenging site, absolutely. Uh, as we're sort of positioning the building or the potential options, we're doing everything we can to keep it as, um, lightweight and a landscape as possible. It also mitigate as much excavation and digging that we have to do, which is costly. Um, that's just, uh, part of the direction. Relative to what we normally find in working on municipal projects, we usually come to the project with a budget set. It's not that the budget is set by the work that we do. So we design to the budget that's in front of us. Part of that is we align the scope and quality of the project to meet the budget, which is, um, what we're doing here today, as well as the size of the facility, what we can actually build. And so that's the other part of the, the conversation today was that the original ask was 27,000 square feet. And based on working back and forth with the chief, we've got it to 18,500, which is something that he's comfortable with for his staff.
So you have a, you have a one, one and a, sorry, one and a half million dollar increase for a 1,500 square foot increase, right? So let's see. Right? Because you went from 10.5 at 17, say it again, 17 what?
Uh, 10.5 at 18,500.
No, well, now you're saying it's 18, 18,500 square feet for 11.6 million dollars, right?
No, no. 18,500 square feet for, uh, 10 and a half million.
Okay.
So then, the goal was then to add back the square footage that were removed for the fitness room and the, um, reduction in the multipurpose room, which, I have the square footage on top of my head, but I believe it was 1,500.
Close to 2,000.
2,000, sorry.
So, so you have 1.1 million dollars for 2,000 extra square feet, right? I just want to put a number to that.
Sure.
Why did I? 2,000, right? So it's $550 per square foot.
Right. So you factor in, that includes the total project cost of that, so that includes the 30% soft costs on top of it.
Trying to put some numbers there.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Does, does the top prices, numbers you're talking about include, uh, site prep?
Yes.
Okay. So we've concluded, I, I thought part of our process was going to be if in fact the site, this site improvements got to be, um, over some kind of margin, um, you know, unusually high, where it takes away from the actual structure, we would then look at alternative sites. Have, have we done that? So you're concluded so far, the question is that the site improvements complexity won't necessarily, necessarily take away from, you know, the desired building?
I would say that our direction to the architecture team has been to use the site that we have in front of us. And so once we've gone through the options, um, which we'll bring back to council during the work session, if the analysis, well, I would say, in addition to that, having our CMGC partner onboard, who would say, who is actually providing most of the cost information once they're on, if there's a significant, um, impact of being on that site that comes out of cost, then that is up for the, the chief and council and staff to make a determination about potentially finding other sites. My only caution in doing that is the general efficiency of the process. Stopping and finding other sites is going to take you a significant amount of time, six months to a year most likely by the time you find a site and acquire it. And so in that timeframe, you've lost, um, buying power through escalation of construction cost.
Well, I don't know that I'll agree with that because what goes up comes down sometime. And if it's paying that well, they'll, they'll build more, more people get into the job. So I think we're at a, at a peak, but I agree with time costs money.
Yeah.
And there's a risk. The, the other question I had is, um, I, I thought when you were here before, we looked at the timeline, and for some reason I was thinking in March, you would be back with much firmer costs. And this isn't it.
This isn't it.
Okay.
And I would say that our schedule has, has slid a little bit in trying to help develop this budget conversation. So are, the next time that we'll be meeting with you, which is the work session timeframe, which hopefully is in the next couple of weeks, uh, we'll be presenting the, the very broad brush options, the three options of, um, of us testing the program and the design on the particular site and then getting your input. And then.
So then, then that leads to the question, and not that I'm doubting the chief's comment and yours about duplicating drawings and all that stuff. You know, I'm not expecting draft level drawings. Okay. So, you know, we talked about a million bucks, million one. Um, and, you know, the, the cost of your cost of redoing, whatever it is, you know, I, I like options and being able, and one of them is what, what is the cost of improving the site, um, so that we can get satisfied that that is the best site and, and we're not spending so much money in site improvements that we lose it in the building. Um, and, and then what else you're offering that you, as, as we look at the, um, the flexibility of the building and all the things we've talked about tonight. So I guess I'm still trying to get comfortable with what really is the damage if we give you the 10.5? And, you know, with, with our handshake that, you know, we're flexible, you know, we could go up another million one, um, but, like, cause I know the minute you get this 11.6, you know, it'll be 11.6, you know, regardless. So I, I'd rather hold back and, you know, let's work towards that, and then we really know what we're putting in. Um, cause if it all goes to site improvements, you know, I, I'm not real excited about that one.
Sure.
So I'd, but I, I'm sensitive to, you know, is, is this redoing or your time, you know, 100,000, 500,000 extra, you know, that we're even talking about?
500,000 extra would be great. I'd take that.
That's why I'm not giving you the 11.6.
Um, so what I would say relative to that, it's, it's a point in the process and when we make that decision and make that call. And so if.
When is that point?
That, that's what I'm saying, is that if we make that decision halfway through construction documents, that's a really painful change, right? Of course. Um, every time, so when we start a process, we try to narrow down the parameters so that we understand what we're designing towards. Um, because we design, we spend a lot of time designing, we're thinking through every option, every consideration, and particularly on, um, this site, there's a lot of constraints that we have to work around. Uh, so what I would say is that if, if you, today, if you tell us that our budget number is 10.5, we will work and design to that 10.5. Um, we will be considering ways that we can probably fit in the additional, um, square footage, but we won't know that number and whether or not that, that fits with a budget number until your CMGC contractor is onboard and they do their initial cost estimate. And so that process of getting in them onboard is pretty crucial. Uh, we have our own cost estimators onboard and they will give our, some preliminary numbers to that, but the CMGC is the contractor who's going to build it. And so they're responsible for setting that guaranteed maximum price at the end of the day, right? Um, so I would say that we move forward, uh, an easy process for me would be to say that we move forward with the 10.5 at this point, um, design with the, um, removal of the things that we've talked about, the smaller multipurpose room and the lack of the fitness room. Um, if you wouldn't say this is my recommendation, I say this is the way you can go. But that, um, and then when we get the first estimate back, then you do a gut check and see if you can come back. At that point though, if we're at the end of schematic design, which is when you would normally do that estimate, I would have to see additional fee to go back and redesign the building. And so redesign the building, um, you know, uh, three to four week process to go back and redo that. I, I can't, um, give you a number here at the moment, but it's probably between 50 and 100.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this, this just made me think. So, I know. So if you were, um, if we did, if we did decide though to go with 11.6, then is there some kind of guarantee that there aren't going to be change orders and they always cost money? And, I mean, that's what I thought.
So relative to change orders, um, they generally happen during construction and you have a contingency in place to, as part of your soft costs, to deal with those when they come up. So that's, I don't, I don't like them either. Um, but they're, they're included in that 11.6 number because your contingency is generally covered in that 30% soft cost.
Okay, so at this point, what is it that is required of council?
I make a motion.
May I?
Please.
I move to establish a budget for the police facility project in the amount of 11.6 million.
I second that.
Motion to second discussion. Um, I, I would just, I'm going to oppose that. I just, I don't think it's, I, I think, I, I think we're going to be in trouble, uh, paying for these things, so that, that's all I've got to say for what I said before. Anyone else? Please.
Williams?
No.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Hoagland?
No.
Casper?
No.
And Hinton?
Yes.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to Smith budget at 10.5 million.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion?
It's not enough.
Okay. I guess that's our discussion. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Nope.
4-2. Mr. Mayor? Well, just want to get a declaration, motion carried.
The motion passes.
I have to leave, I have children, I need to go back. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, that's, that leaves us with the quorum, so we're good to go. And good night, children. Yes, yeah.
And then somebody wanted, um, Mr. Dwyer? Dwyer?
Thank you, gentlemen, both. And we might want to shove Debbie's placard away.
She hasn't been sitting there for a while.
Yeah, he doesn't pass.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors.
Evening.
David Dwyer with the Klosch Group, and, um, really happy to be here, grateful that you, um, awarded the work to us. We're really excited. And, uh, yeah, um, just, I think we signed the contract two weeks ago, so these guys have a little advantage on me because we just started working here, uh, on the CMGC RFP. Uh, that's first on my list to get the, our partners onboard. As Ian eloquently stated, that those guys are key to this process, so we're looking forward to, to having those guys onboard soon, as soon as we can. That's a busy market out there too, so everybody is very selective on what they're pursuing. So part of our job is really to kind of create some excitement around this job and some of the buying power that the Klosch Group has and relationships to really make this appealing. So I think that's something that we're looking forward to bringing onboard. Any questions of me?
Could you remind us where you're from and?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, a little bio? Is that what you're asking for? A little biography on me? Is that what you're asking for? Yeah, so.
The company.
Yeah, so Klosch Group, um, as you may have read, uh, was formed probably a year and a half ago by Jeff Caldwell. He's the president and founder. Um, I came onboard to join him here eight months ago, August, July, August of last year, um, just because of the way he was pursuing his business, is very nimble and not a big corporate structure, but able to do all kinds of things and not really having, um, anything but the client dictate how we do business. Some bigger companies are dictated more by the corporate headquarters on how we do business. And to me, it was really important that the client is really the focus of, of our business model. So to that end, um, I had, prior to that, I was working for Skanska USA Building, um, as a project executive. So I was overseeing, um, major commercial projects from public, like, um, fire station, uh, higher education, hospitals, commercial, high tech, biopharmaceutical. So a number of, of commercial projects, uh, from cradle to grave. So, um, that was my recent experience. Um, and prior to that, I was a graduate of the military academy, so my, I've had 35, 40 years of leadership experience too, so this is right up my alley. So really looking forward to this opportunity. This will be a great job, really will. So I commend you on your, on what you've accomplished today. I think that's a, you know, where these guys now have direction, you know, the team. This will be a great job, really will. So I commend you on your, on what you've accomplished today. I think that's a, you know, where these guys now have direction, you know, the team, to move forward and really start to get some, this next work session, to get something in front of you, define some options and really start putting some rubber to the road. So, to answer your question?
Yeah, uh, Skanska is, I think, doing the hospital here.
They are. Mm-hmm. Yep, I know that team. Mm-hmm.
Is there any cost benefit to the police station with, you knowing them?
Well, they're, yeah, they're, matter of fact, I mean, in a way, there, there is because you have a subcontract market from the valley that's going to be here. So if we can leverage that, whether it's Skanska or their sub-trade partners or suppliers, there's definitely some economies to that, definitely.
Newport's building a hospital, too, so get them both.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one, believe it or not.
Don't.
So you'll be working pretty close with our chief here?
Yep, yes.
You guys going to get along okay?
Well, my job is to make his, so he can do his day job. Because he's a busy man, for him to be project manager...
Very busy, and that was my worry.
At the same time, is a tall order. Knowing what my job takes to do his job and my job would be a lot.
So you can read our minds when we get finished with this process and make sure it gets built according to dream? Oh, and the plans, too, sorry.
Yeah, plans and specs.
That was one of the qualities that their team came to us with during the interview process is of all the groups that we interviewed, they're probably one of the ones that recognized that I have another job, primarily running a police department, and they're very respectful of my time commitment to the process, not to shortchange the process at all, but they recognize that's their role and where they need to step in at.
Dave, if I could?
Sure.
And maybe, if this is not your role, please let me know. I, I haven't heard, or maybe I haven't forgotten, what kind of workforce are we looking at? How many people are anticipated to be on this project? And within that, I'm assuming we're going to bring people in from the valley or steal from some people who are already working here, how are we housing these people?
Well, they won't, anybody who works at the coast, on my experience, they will just commute. They will travel or their company will put them up in a, in a room. They'll figure, the company's the subcontractor market, they will take care of that on their own. And if they choose to rent a house or hotel or whatever, each company will, either they will commute back home or they will make a way here. So to your first question, how many people? At the peak, you may have, for a job like this, now, this is just my experience and my instinct, 40 to 50 people at the peak on a day. You know, when we're doing the structures up and there are people on the outside of the building, people on the inside of the building, you may have that many people over the whole course of the job. You may have three, 400 different folks on this job building this for you, tradespeople. And they'll come from, I mean, we're, we're building a, the Seaside Convention Center. Most of that workforce, the main players, are from the coastal communities. So we've been able to leverage coastal tradespeople to do that, so that they don't have to travel. And there's a little bit of a, some benefit, you know, economically, too. You don't have to pay for subsistence and per diems if you can manage the same quality level, you know, without having to people, take people from the valley. So that's our, that's our kind of goal here, to bring some value and, to the local community as well, not just, just because we need people from the valley just to do this job. However we can build value here, that's what we'll try to do first.
So it might behoove some of our hotel owners to approach you or someone else to say, we can put a packet together for these people?
Yeah, the way I would probably recommend doing that is, being in that role myself at one point, is the, once we get the CMGC partner on, the project manager will probably be the point of contact to start that kind of conversation. Since I'm not really contracting to anybody, that person will be, he or she will be the one that will really start making those relationships and those inroads to then help their subcontract community, like, hey, here's some options for you to, you know, for subsistence and places you can stay.
This could be a, a, a Monday through Friday project?
Maybe, maybe not. It might be 4:10, so that may be Monday through Thursday. Usually travelers like that 4:10 kind of schedule, you know, then they get the three-day weekend. So, I'll leave that up to the CMGC partner on how they can really buy their buying power, too, save it at Skanska.
Yeah, I would like to hear about the workforce as we move forward. So we've got an indication of what we need for them.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Well, great, welcome aboard.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here, thank you.
All right, look forward to hearing from you.
Mr. Jeller, did we want to set a date for work session coming up in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, we'd like to set a work meeting for, by, for the end of the month, before the end of the month. We have some people that are going to be away, and so I was actually looking for a non-Monday night, and so I was thinking Tuesday, the 27th.
That leaves you two days to choose from.
It does. Yeah, we, yeah, that does. We really just end up with Tues, the 27th or the 28th.
Either works for me.
27th sounds better. I just kind of remember it as somewhere on the 20th, but, oh, I know what it is, during the day, though, so...
Do you want to schedule that in the evening or during the day?
Evening.
Evening.
Okay.
Schedule that during the evening, then, for the 27th.
Is that like six o'clock evening?
Six or 5:30?
Your choice. We're, we're here.
5:30.
5:30.
It's like 3 o'clock, but I'm not going to win. I would like Council Anderson to note that I'm doing this in the phone.
Who's that?
I would like you to note that I'm doing it in this and not in my...
Hey, electronics.
Yeah, there you go. So you know. Which I do repeatedly, on so many levels.
I thank you for your time and a very insightful discussion and stuff.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks to Ian, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Once again.
All right, appointment to Parks and Recs Board. That was us, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
The mayor and I each interviewed Mr. Weston Fritz, and I think he would be an asset to the Parks and Rec Board. He has a lot of landscaping experience, he brings that viewpoint. So I moved to appoint Weston Fritz to the Parks and Rec Board.
Any a second?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Second.
Got a motion to second discussion?
I just wanted to ask a question, which, is that to a city position or do you know?
Yes, that's a city position.
Okay, thank you.
He lives within city limits.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed he was not a registered voter. Did you have any conversation with him about registering to vote?
No, I didn't notice that.
I mean, that...
Well, perhaps you and I can make a call.
Is that a requirement? Oh, it's not?
It is for you, but not...
Yeah, okay.
No, I would just add he was...
I know that he hasn't lived here very long.
Yeah, just, I, I think he's going to be a great asset, he's got some real-world experience that he can bring to, to this position, not just academic. Okay, enough discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Appointment to Sustainability Committee, Matthew Fisher.
I pick this, Dick?
Yeah, actually, Counselor Walke and I interviewed Matthew Fisher, together but separately, and another interesting young man. He actually is an instructor at the Community College in Biology and Environmental Science. So we had a, a great discussion about Sustainability Committee and pointed out to him that he would be the first and only member to this committee, and that has some drawbacks. One of them is getting other members, and that led us into a discussion of what's his area of focus? What would he see? Because he, he comes across very well, he's an instructor, young man, and I think just right for leading this group. So we not only hit the home run, in my opinion, with a member, but a leader. And he's actually gone to the extent of followed up the interview and had some ideas because Counselor Walke and I both talked about the city being able to help focus some advertising for members to the Sustainability Committee. And he followed up with us some great ideas, and I, they're certainly environmental-oriented, and again, working with Parks and Rec and areas, including even recycling, but taking advantage and educating more on our natural resources in this area. So I'd strongly recommend Matthew Fisher.
Second, sent a motion?
That's a motion.
And seconded.
Motion to second discussion? Hearing none.
I was really encouraged by his scope of work that he presented to us and his willingness to reach out to members.
No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Okay, did we jump over, yeah, we did. Oh, my gosh. Does anyone want to take five or 10, or are you guys good, keep going? And gals and ladies, council members?
Okay.
Keep plowing through. All right. Ordinances, ordinance number 201802, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title IV, Real Property. I'm not going to read the rest, Mr. Appicello.
Your Honor, Council, this is first reading of ordinance 201802, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title IV, Real Property, Chapter 4.04, Acceptance of Real Property Interests, Leases and IGA Renewals, Section 4.041, or 010, City Manager Delegation, Paragraphes C through E, Execute Real Property Leases Not to Exceed Five Years. Ask for approval of first reading, and if unanimous, we'll move to second reading. This was an ordinance at a previous meeting, you directed that we could bring forward, which just basically increases the delegation to the city manager. We had a license, we had to put on the agenda, so this does limit it to $50,000 or five years, same as the leases. Ask for approval of first reading.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion to second discussion? Roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Council, this is second reading of ordinance 201802, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title IV, Real Property, Chapter 4.04, Acceptance of Real Property Interests, Leases and IGA Renewals, Section 4.04010, City Manager Delegation, Paragraphes C through E, Execute Real Property Leases Not to Exceed Five Years. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion to second discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number 201803.
Your Honor, Council, I made a mistake in this ordinance. It's actually in ordinance 201705, we actually used Chapter 2.70 as a new section for the Budget Committee, so I can't add this to the code as Chapter 2.70. It needs to be 2.72. So there's a couple places in the ordinance where I can read that. Now, I know that there was some thought about asking for continuance on this, has, has that been dropped? Are we ready to proceed?
I have some questions. I don't know that needing to continue it, but I have...
Have a good time.
Okay. On page seven of the ordinance, I guess, is how to describe it. Number 15. Oh, it's Terms of Emergency Declaration. An emergency declaration shall state in writing... No, no, I'm sorry. No, this is authorized emergency orders. Upon the declaration of an emergency and during the existence of such emergency, the terms of any such declaration may include any of the following or such other terms of emergency orders which are not prohibited by law allowing the city of Lincoln City to. And number 15 is prohibit or restrict the sale of alcoholic beverages. Well, I'm wondering if we should also, if we're going to prohibit or restrict the sale of alcoholic beverages, if we should include cannabis with that.
I would agree with that.
Isn't there a line, isn't there a line above it that prevents commercial sales? I'm flipping through it here. Oh, suspend, curtail or suspend commercial activity. Does that mean, what does that mean? Purchasing? Does that mean purchasing?
I think 14 is broader than 15, and 14 could include cannabis. If you want to call it out separately, it's probably not prohibited. In fact, when you look at our code, marijuana and alcohol were located in the same place in our, in our code. So now, of course, the laws have changed and it's legal to possess marijuana, but sale is, of course, heavily regulated, so... If you would like to add it, we can, I haven't had a chance to look for any preemption, however, which would, might be the issue. We could say prohibit or restrict the sale of alcoholic beverage, beverages or other intoxicants, and if, in fact, we're preempted, that we could basically just say, well, of course, we're not going to do something, we're preempted on it.
Nice question. So like, does this mean we're not supposed to have any altered states of consciousness when we go through this emergency? I mean, it...
Yeah.
I didn't quite understand.
I don't understand the logic of it.
There's a, there's a, quite a number of things...
Is it boilerplate?
That you can do, there's, this is not really a exhaustive list. This is like a list of things that oftentimes come up as appropriate in an emergency. The only, I did make an alteration, this is based upon the 2008 resolution, 200803, and so all the paragraphs are pretty much the same. I did tweak the firearms provision because there's a certain amount of preemption in state law on firearms. But it's basically a list of powers you could exercise, you don't have to. In the past, we've created forms where you simply check the box, and this is basically for the person declaring the emergency. It may be you, it may be the city manager, which you later ratify.
Thank you.
I was a, a little concerned about number 12, possession of the loaded firearm also, but a person licensed to carry a concealed handgun is included in that exemption.
Yes, I specifically altered it to reference the 166173 exclusion. The prior resolution did not acknowledge concealed weapons permit holders as being authorized. Basically, we're preempted on that. We are expressly authorized to prohibit the carrying of loaded firearms, so open carry can be regulated, obviously, in the state of emergency. Anything else? I can do the readings if you care. Okay, this is first reading of ordinance 201803, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title II, Administration and Personnel, adding Chapter 272, Emergency Operations, to provide code authority to declare a state of emergency and impose emergency measures, naming the city manager as emergency manager and updating adoption of the city emergency, emergency management plan. As I mentioned, there is a cross-reference or numbering error, so the chapter will now be 272, purpose will be 272010, adoption of emergency operation plan, 272015, definition of emergency, 272020, authority, 272030, declaration of emergency, who may declare an emergency, 272040, and the cross... And the cross-references, again, are changed to 272. And the city recorder is authorized to correct cross-references. Appointment of emergency manager and order of succession is now 272050. Term of emergency declaration, 272060. Authorized emergency orders, 272070. 272080 is acquisition of resources. And 272090, authority or over removal of disaster, debris, wreckage, authorizations required. All the cross-references are also changed to 272, 272300. Penalty, 272310. Responsibility for emergency management, 272320, is now interpretation. Ask for approval of first reading with the changes as read.
Is there one other change that we have?
Can I miss one?
The change I suggested, if I'll begin to do-
Oh, well, if you would like to add to- If you'd like to add to number 15, prohibit or restrict the sale of alcoholic beverages or other intoxicants. Is that acceptable? Or we could go with cannabis, but then you get into the definition of what is cannabis products and-
Intoxicants is good.
Ask for approval of first reading with changes as read.
So moved with changes as read?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Just a quick question. Why would be limit intoxicants, Mr. Chandler? During an emergency? Yeah. I would think we'd want more. We'd want to reduce price.
Well, I can tell you, I had a boss that went through a hurricane sober, and he didn't like that experience. But when you're looking at aftermath of emergencies, a lot of what you're dealing with are, you're doing rescue efforts, you're helping people, you're trying to put it together. Last thing you need are some people that are intoxicated.
Do you just don't want to give them access to that in the time of the emergency?
Really rather have our public safety officers focused on rescuing people rather than intoxicated people.
It'll come up, and I want to give my answer. Finish what you got. Smoke them if you got them. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 201803, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, adding a chapter, new Chapter 272, Emergency Operations, to provide code authority to declare a state of emergency and impose emergency measures, naming the city manager as emergency manager, and updating adoption of the city emergency management plan. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I'm sorry, somewhere in here, you said you wanted to postpone one. Was it this next one or?
No, it's one more.
Okay. All right, so 208, 201804.
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 201804, ordinance number 201804, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 204, City Council, Section 204020, Order of Business, and amending, check ordinance 2017-20, Council Rules Generally, Exhibit A, Section 7, Council Meeting's Agenda. Your Honor, counsel, what this is, is two changes to the council rules. The first change is to the council rules resolution that we just incorporated and updated into the code. That was the Exhibit A reference. And in that portion of the council rules, we're updating the, simply changing Wednesday to Monday for the deadline to get materials to the city manager for approval on the agenda.
That's officially adopting the practice that we've had for quite some time now.
The second change is to the order of proceedings. And I apologize, the Exhibit A came before the ordinance in this, on the packet, electronic packet. I'm not sure how that happened. But in the Order of Business 204020, we're adding public hearing slash public comments because sometimes we don't have a public hearing, but we have a requirement under, like, for example, fee resolutions to have, allow public comment on fee resolutions. There's a statute on that. There was reports from standing committees, which I think we don't, simply don't use, and we replace it with something we are using, which is actions, if any, based on work session, executive session. And we've added or citizen comment. And this came up when we had a request by the Warming Shelter, and you said, where, shouldn't we have a place to respond to requests from, that come up from citizens? It doesn't necessarily have to be at that meeting. It could be at a previous meeting, and we, at ready, we have a place now to address it, instead of having to wait for the end and have a counselor bring it up. And then it was suggested, and this is really more for discussion, that we eliminate the second additional comments from citizens present on the agenda from the meeting. We have a public forum at the beginning of the meeting where we allow citizens to comment. It's been suggested that we remove the second one. It's also been suggested for discussion. And I put this in here mostly because it was brought up as a point of discussion that perhaps we should remove public comment from this council meeting, the business meeting, and have a separate meeting for members of the public to redress their grievances to their elected officials. So at times, maybe not so much tonight, but at times we have a great deal of public comment, which delays the business meeting portion of our meeting. So I don't think, once you've created a public forum, you can get rid of it, but I think you could substitute something that you felt was equivalent. So if you had a separate meeting for public comment, that's not in this ordinance. I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. The only thing is, in this ordinance right now, is the suggestion that the second citizen comment, which is typically at the very end of the meeting, not be included. We may have to provide for more time at the beginning of the meeting. But I, I just put it in there because it was an issue, and I discussed with, with Mr. Chandler about putting, making it a point of discussion. If you're not happy with striking that, then simply ask for approval of first reading, but restore paragraph M, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items, back to where it was.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable striking it. I haven't seen that big of a desire. We haven't had that many people come up, but I would not-
At the end.
Yeah, at the end. But I like it to have it here for someone who can't get off work in time or just caught up late. I mean, we've had people, I remember in the past, who saw something on TV and they rushed down to say something. And I like the idea of them having that, that vent to have their say. But that's just me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve our first reading of ordinance 2018-04. You said restore-
Restore paragraph M and-
And M is work session and executive session, or N?
No, M is additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items, and then relet her after that. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and just, because I'm going to bring this up later tonight, just so I'm clear as I'm restating the motion. Are we agreeing to what I just said?
Yes.
Leaving the public, okay, I got lost in the Ms. and the Ends. All right.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah. And did I hear you say something about discussion of items brought up during public comment?
Well, not necessarily. Remember, executive sessions are separate meeting from this meeting. Work sessions are typically a separate meeting from this meeting. But let's say at the last meeting, you had a request from the Warming Shelter, and then the Warming Shelter said, oh, we'd like to make this request, and you didn't deal with it at that meeting. At least you have a place on the agenda to deal with things that are brought up during public comment. It doesn't have to be that same meeting. In fact, staff might not be prepared to deal with it right away. But there's a place now for you to bring it up rather than at the end of the meeting.
Where is that?
That's under paragraph L, actions, if any, based on work session, executive session, or citizen comment.
Citizen comment, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We get a lot of people that kind of ask why, are you, did you not say anything after I got up and spoke?
Right.
And, and if we have a place on the agenda where we could address it, maybe that would give them a little bit more feeling of empowerment.
I like that. Okay.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, just the only other, because I made the motion, I agree with the double comment opportunities, because I don't think it's been abused by any extent. If anything, at some point, we, you know, I've always found it interesting that we have public comment for five minutes per citizen, and at a public hearing, they only get three minutes. You know, I could see those being reversed, because back to the, you know, the real business, the public hearing, you know, they seldom have time to really state their case with just three minutes. If we're worried about public comments getting too long, I'm not there, but that's, rather than eliminating one, you could reduce the time.
Yeah, because I think that the chair still has that ability to just say, hey, this has gone on long enough, and we're done for tonight.
I, not, I guess I would argue that they get their five minutes. We've, we've had some-
No, it says again, because I recall when you were mayor, you had that, when we had the big crowd here, and you said, we're going to limit it to this.
Yeah.
And, you know, there is that option of the chair.
I think we're on the same base.
Yeah. So, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And ordinance 201801, you've asked for-
Should I do second reading?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, no, thank you.
Okay, your honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance number 201804, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 204, City Council, Section 204020, Order of Business, and amending ordinance 2017-20, Council Rules Generally, Exhibit A, Section 7, Council Meeting's Agenda. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the changes as read.
Request, move, similar motion? Yeah, I'd make that motion.
I second approval of second reading.
Whoever Robert is, and Robert's rules of orders is-
We're close.
Rolling in the grave right now. So motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now 201801.
Your Honor, counsel, I'm just asking for a continuance of 201801. We're still working on it, and we'll try to bring it back on the 26th.
Move to continue ordinance 201801 to February 26, 6 o'clock in this location.
Second. Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we jump back to city attorney, city manager reports, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do we jump into the request for city to initiate first? All right, we have a request for the city to initiate a code amendment to the Taff Village Corps. Who's covering that?
I think we're supposed to tag team this. We are tag teaming a bit. Richard, do you want to talk a little bit about what you wrote? And then Richard Townsend and I are going to speak a little bit to this.
Your Honor, counsel, basically, I set forth what the code requires on this matter, and it includes preparing findings, and you did have a speaker address this earlier in the evening. And staff basically would not be proposing this addition to any of the Pearl districts. So staff would recommend that a privately initiated application would be more appropriate. And again, that's simply based on discussions that we've had, and-
And I think I need to-
And you-
Intraject here, before we go too much further, because if it's just a normal ordinance or a request for a change in zoning, we'd probably just, you know, jump in as one of many in the class, but I think this is a particular instance where I'm specifically involved in this, so I'm going to have to declare conflict of interest in this. And because I am the owner, my wife and I are the owners of the property that the Warming Shelter is concerned with, so I'm going to sit this one out. So President Pro Tem will run things from here.
So there's four of us on this discussion now?
I did go through, the staff report has the applicable criteria and the requirement, and it is, of course, placed on the burden on the applicant to prepare the materials. Staff receives an application fee to review the materials. It's often difficult as staff to become the proponent and also the reviewer of an application. So it's often difficult, especially when you have requests to initiate, as opposed to someone comes in with, here's my application, I've done the best I can to address the criteria, please review it. We have to create it and then say, oh, well, this is the best application ever. You happen to be the one that wrote it. So that's part of the problem, as well as the obvious criticism for initiating something that would apply to elected representative's property, so.
Madam Chair. The other challenge that's associated with this is, was discussed a little bit earlier in the public comments, and that's the drafting of the findings. Normally, when we are drafting findings based on an initiated action by the city council, we know what, we have a sense of what you are feeling about the project and so forth. In this case, I'm not sure that the staff can actually come up with the findings that say, yes, you should do this, or no, you shouldn't do this, and then complicates it with what Mr. Appicello said, and then, and then reviewing our own work. And so I find that it is a much better process if the Warming Shelter is coming up with the findings of fact, so that we can then review them and have a more objective process. We have had, I have had many phone calls and discussions with different people on both sides of this issue. There is quite a bit of interest on both sides of it, and quite a bit of passion on both sides of it. And so I think it puts the city staff and the city council in an awkward position if we are trying to create the findings for something before you even had a chance to hear, and the planning commission has had a chance to hear, the comments that people are making.
And to add to that, during the public hearing process, we may hear, you know, not just in the application suggested findings, but we may hear from the public during the process, here's a basis, or here's a basis. And in the end, we're responsible to make sure we've incorporated those findings into the final decision. But at the outset, it's often difficult to come up with the rationale, especially if it wasn't R I D. in the first place, so.
Madam Chair. I have a question of the two of you. Just in, in the end of the, sorry, in the end of the staff report, under potential motions on, excuse me, on packet page 262, the last motion mentions blah, 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 invite the Lincoln City Warming Shelter to submit a privately initiated application, blah, blah, blah. But there's two, there's two partners in the, in renting, you know, there's the property owner, and there's the business. And this is a land use decision, isn't it? Or is it, am I misunderstanding something, a zoning?
It's land use, and it would require initiation, and, yeah, I probably should have said invite the owner and/or leaseholder to initiate the application. There was a assurance of compliance submitted, and the parties to the notice of violation- There was a assurance of compliance submitted, and the parties to the notice of violation indicated that they would, if in fact the city didn't initiate it, they would initiate it. I think it, I quoted it, but I think it may say the Warming Shelter will initiate it. But they can certainly negotiate that among themselves.
Okay, I'm, mine was a land use question, I don't really, it doesn't matter who does, but I just thought, because it's land use, it should be the property owner, but that isn't, that's not true.
Well, no, and it, again, this is a proposed legislative change to the zoning code. It, and that's part of the reason why these things are complicated. This is not about a specific piece of property. This is a proposal to change the T V C code to add a use as a conditional use. So, anyone with T V C could actually propose this use. That means all the properties that are zoned T V C, and I included the map, would be, have to be looked at, and it's not about this specific piece of property. If it was, by contrast, if this was a quasi judicial application to change this property from T V C to general commercial, where it, a warming shelter, emergency shelter, is already listed as a conditional use, that would be a different, definitely quasi judicial application. This is proposed as a legislative change, where all T V C properties would be allowed to have a emergency shelter as a conditional use. So, that's, that's a lot different.
So, it's wide open?
It's all land use, but it's-
It's open, rather than specific to this property. Okay, thank you. I would like to do what we can to support this group of people who've worked so hard for a very worthy cause, but I can't justify this almost conflict of interest. I, I agree with the city manager and the city attorney's recommendation reluctantly. Do I hear a motion?
I'd make the motion to decline, to initiate a zoning amendment, and invite the owners and Lincoln City Warming Shelter to submit a privately initiated application in accordance with requirements of LCMC 17.88.
Second.
And a motion and a second to decline the initiation of a code amendment? Roll call, please.
William, or, I'm sorry, Walke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. All right. Outside agency, outside agency request grant application.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so some time ago, you had talked with us that prior to when we started the process of sending out for applications for outside agency requests, that we revise our application document to talk a little bit more about what people are going to do, the history they've had, and the funds that they've used in the past. We included in your packet, an application for you to consider. In between the publication of the packet and tonight, Counselor Hinton had made some recommendations. I put on your desk a revision of this with her recommendations, which are in red. And so, we bring that before you for your consideration.
Your Honor, counsel, I just wanted to add that it might not be a bad idea to state on here, right above the signatures, that perhaps the applicants understand and agree that any grant award is subject to execution of a grant agreement. So, they know upfront that there's going to be something that holds them to the terms and conditions of the grant.
We haven't done that in the past, but we do that for V C B grants.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, please go.
I like the changes that Counselor Hinton suggested, especially in the number seven. I think that when it refers to a Word document, it should be a capitalized W, if you wanted a Word, I mean, a Word, Word document.
Where is that?
Right below the tables there.
One, in the paragraph under funding history, and below the little table, and it's, it says a typed Word document, which doesn't necessarily mean a Microsoft Word document, if it's referring to a Microsoft Word document. It should be capitalized.
Okay, got you.
The other thing I'm wondering about is a time. Says postmarked or emailed, would that be by midnight? Often, it's 4:30 or 5:00. But if you're allowing an email, maybe it's, I mean, a postmark, I don't know.
When we do bids for construction projects, we usually put a time, and that's 5:00, and we can do that.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with 5:00.
Okay. I have a question, too, since we've run into this matter with the grant application running a file of zoning, do we have anything in there that says, have you checked the zoning? Or have you checked with the local government authorities to be able to do what you want to do once you receive this money?
Up till this year, we haven't given enough to allow them to do anything. I mean-
I understand, but I'm saying, this would have prevented that, this whole thing from occurring, I think, if something at the front end had said, hey, did you go look at this?
Mr. Mayor, that would probably occur during the review of the application itself. This needs to be generic enough so that it can cover multiple types of requests. When we get those applications in, and say we come across something that says, we want to put this, this, in this zone, then the staff can-
Right, and that's a broader one, but where we've had things where, say, like we had grants for, I'll just say Devil's Lake Dash, maybe that wasn't exactly what I'm after, but they couldn't do what they wanted to do. Have we said, yeah, we're going to give you money so you can do this, and then they can't, they shouldn't have done it?
Your Honor-
Even in small amounts.
I, I think that, my suggestion was, we include reference to a grant agreement. The grant agreement would say things like, you must comply with all applicable zoning covenants and restrictions, in the case of, you know, Regatta Park. So, I think we could cover that in, more or less, take the V C B grant agreement, and maybe pare it down to what's appropriate.
As I say, people headaches down the road.
Yeah.
To go through this again. And I'm, I'm good with Counselor Hinton's.
I had a couple more.
No, you don't.
Yes, just little ones.
Already done changes.
I know, I have another one.
Mr. Mayor-
Wait, I was speaking.
Please, continue, I couldn't tell if you guys are just talking or speaking.
Nope, I meant was asking for the floor.
Go ahead.
I think I was given it. Right? Okay, this is a small one. On the back page, it says printed name of contact person, the word name should probably be capitalized. And then I have a question, it says mail applications to the following, email applications to, do you, and then the address, do you want them either or, or and? Open those boxes on the top of that page? Yeah, that's what I thought. So, down here, maybe it should be more clear. Applications must be both mailed, and, anyway, just-
Good, within that, I'm sorry.
Since, since we're on the, that contact and authorized official, could someone explain to me the difference between those? Because on the front of the application, we already have who's the primary contact, so we have the name and title, and do we need, I'm trying to figure out what, two, two different people, two different, what's the purpose?
I'm not following you.
On the back of your application-
Right.
You have a signature of authorized official-
Uh huh.
And across from it, signature of contact person. However, on the front of the application, you already have the contact person.
Oh, thank you, yeah, okay, got it.
And besides that, I'm trying to figure out, what is the difference between authorized official and a contact person in a nonprofit?
On a, in a V C B grant, the authorized official was a board member, the contact person was the executive director. That's the way it depends.
It, oftentimes, the contact person in, in our public, you know, improvement contracts is Terry Chamberlain, and then the authorized person to sign under our public contract code is either the counsel or Mr. Chamberlain, so.
So, not to get overboard, but, you know, I understand with the city stuff, and shall we send a resolution as well to apply for the grant? I mean, this, this is local nonprofit, I think it's a little overkill, I, I think, you know, but I have some of those others, if, once, I, if I can, if I can keep going, but I don't know what we're going to do with some of this stuff, but I came down, and if you go to the front page, we talk about, I think rightfully, if you've gotten any kind of funding from the city in the last three years. So, I assume that would be a V C B grant. Would that be a rehab loan? Would that be a urban renewal scholarship that came through the community college? Or are we just talking about, did you get outside agency fund over the last three years?
The way that is written, it would be any funding.
So, then, grant program name, I guess that's where they would put in whatever that was, with V C B grant, or something, I, okay, if that's maybe some, back up above, where were the three years? My little note says, interesting, glad to have it. Who and how are you going to track this stuff? So, I'm assuming what you're trying to set up is a, what they say this time they're going to use the money for, someone's going to look back to see if they, in fact, that's what they said they were going to, you know, when, when they report, and so that's another layer of, of tracking, is that?
That's the process that the V C C uses, in which that, well, there's actually even more extensive than what we're asking here. In their case, they have to give an after item report, say, showing that they actually did what they said.
Right.
We didn't include that step of it, but it would come essentially with the next application. In other words, if I gave you $10,000, you said you were going to use it on A, B, and C, and the next application, you come and ask for another $10,000, you would be showing what happened with the previous-
Well, that's why I was assuming this was, we're trying to set up that kind of thing.
It is.
Again, it's, it's another layer-
It is.
Process for staff. Okay, I, we're adding, I just want people to hear it. As we go down, and I'm not looking at, I guess it's on the same one, item three, how many Lincoln City residents will you be served, will be served? How many, four is how many non-Lincoln County residents will be served?
City.
Mine says Lincoln-
On the latest one, it's been changed to city.
Okay. Ah, that would change, because I was missing the-
Oh, yeah.
Catch there, okay. What is the status of your agency's corporation?
Yeah, I didn't get that either.
Or is that, or a nonprofit, or do we care?
I, I, we do care, we oftentimes have people apply for grants or submit contracts, and they don't actually have an official existence at the Hillhawken Secretary of State Corporations Division. So, as a contracting checklist, we typically require them to make sure they have official recognition there, they've registered, and they also get the local O T P and whatever else is necessary.
Is it a requirement within our grant guidelines?
For the most part, I believe it is, for the, the V C B stuff. I mean, we don't typically contract or give money to people who say they're, you know, Joe's Welding, and if in fact Joe's Welding doesn't exist, and it's just an accountability thing, so we, the entity that we contract with has an existence. If it's a, just a person, then that's fine, but if you're using a name, you need to, either need to have a doing businesses as, or some kind of corporate existence, so. And we've had many instances where people have let their registrations lapse, and we've been working on staff to catch those, so we don't-
So, the question is, is, can you be something and, can you be a nonprofit and not in corporation? I mean, are we, are we looking one or the other, or both, or a corporation that's a nonprofit? I mean, all I was suggesting, or do we want to add nonprofit? When I see agencies in corporation, didn't lead me to believe we cared or didn't care if they were a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, if it's a corporation, nonprofit corporation. It's a type of corporation.
It is a type of corporation. Okay.
Do you want to change agency to nonprofit?
Um, no. What I'd like to know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wrote, or a nonprofit, but I don't know.
Well, I guess what I'd want to know, and I don't know if we can look it up tonight, is the, what's the, the mission statement of this, from, from the V C B, or not the V C B, the outside agency, what is, what is it that we're doing?
On the news, it says mission statement.
Where? No, no, not from them, from us.
Oh.
Why are we doing this? Why are we giving money? And that's what I wanted, I don't have that in front of me.
I mean, you want some kind of a cover letter that goes with-
No, I want to know, why are we doing this in the first place? Why are we giving outside agency grants? There must have been something that was said, here's why we're doing it, and here's who we want to serve, and I don't have that in front of me.
I think the intention is for not-for-profit entities.
And I'm sure that's true, but I just, again, I don't have anything in front of me to confirm that, that's all I'm asking is, if there's something specific in the, that says, here's what, here's why we did this in the first place, if it conflicts with this, I'd like to know.
Yeah, I've never seen anything written, it's been over time, that, that the Budget Committee felt an obligation to assist local nonprofits, or those who were serving local.
So, it's just a general understanding?
Right.
And we're comfortable-
So, we're formalizing it much more, which is great, I mean, it's nothing-
I'm easy, I just want to know what I'm voting for.
But I, like I say, I struggled with just looking at this, what the definitions were, so I'm just raising-
Well, if I can jump in then, while you're still grazing.
Well, and I, I know Counselor Hinton, with her new ads, got to some of my points, that number seven, the, on the old one, you know, I underlined economic situation, which didn't do anything for me, and, you know, often, it, they're, they're asking for more money, either to continue filling the gap they're filling, or need, and it has nothing to do with, you know, what the economy is doing today, they're going to raise donations to keep the fight up. So, I, I think the revised seven, you know, gets to it a bit, you know, as your financial needs increased or decreased over the last year, you know, all the answer always, you know, increase the need.
Yeah, I can't remember an application that didn't have all this in it in the first place. I mean, I can't remember one where they left a chunk of this information out, so.
I guess, you know, the last thing, if I can, is, and I've, I've looked at these with other organizations, I would suggest some kind of limitation of explanation. You know, provide complete information to all seven requests in order. Make sure you have included an explanation of how past grant funding was used. I've had similar requests like that, and they attach booklets of stuff. So I would suggest with, you know, 50 words or less, or one page to include everything, just to keep people from bludgeoning you with...
Well, and I wanna...
You can put in a maximum number of pages, and then they can...
No, that's okay. I'd like to get back to the issue of the Word document. Are we going to reject all handwritten submissions?
Well, it has to be emailed.
I can email something that I write. I mean, I've got a...
Scanner.
You can scan it, yeah.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we actually want to do this so that it meld, email, or an Adobe fill-in.
Right on.
Online. We'd much rather have it come to us electronically than the handwritten.
Okay. So my question still is, will we reject handwritten documents?
It does not say that we will reject the...
But it does, it says we have to have...
Well, it says, yes, it does, it says it has to be in Word.
Yeah.
And why are we requiring both hard copy and electronic copy?
Don't have an answer for that.
I have one more little question within that. Does it have to be specific to your assistant? Or is there not just a generic? Because if she leaves tomorrow, do we change into email, or is it just...
Well, we would easily change that, but the problem is that I don't have just a generic address to send it. I've gotta, I've gotta put an existing one in, and that's who will process this.
Okay.
I guess we could always create one, but they...
Oh, does one make it easy for folks?
They come to her, she's going to be dealing with them.
And if she were to leave today, you would just, there's a program within there just to forward anything that came to that address to the new...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm easy.
On number five, I think maybe it needs to be a little bit clearer. It says, what is the status of your agency's incorporation? And you could put maybe parentheses, nonprofit, profit?
Active, inactive.
As a nonprofit or...
What are you asking when you say...
Officer. It's very clear to me what that is. It means I'm, I'm a, I'm registered with the state of Oregon, and I'm 501(c)(3).
Suppose I'm, you know...
Yeah.
...nonprofit here, and I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, if you are applying for this, you would know what that meant.
Oh, okay.
All right, I did not think this would take this long.
Surprise.
I wonder, whose handwriting is all over this?
It made it simpler. Can you imagine switching it down all the time?
Your honor, I...
You're welcome.
I appreciate Counselor Hinton's changes to number seven. I think that number seven started, like, in 2008 or 2009. I don't think that was included prior to then, and it made sense then, but it really doesn't now. But the way she's worded it, I think it does. I think we've kind of hit a median between the VCB grant and the Soletz Tribal Grant. It was fairly easy. This is a little more cumbersome, but not as cumbersome as the VCB grant.
I'm still not comfortable with the idea of a separate type of Word document.
Yeah.
I don't, as a requirement of getting a grant from us.
And how are you going to know how many Lincoln City residents or non-residents are served?
They should know that.
Well, you know that?
Most of them had a generic...
Yeah, I, I don't know that because our consumers are...
School kids.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's all anonymous. We don't know.
Okay.
But I can explain that.
Let me rephrase that.
The number, though, right?
I would think this is something you would want to know.
Correct.
I would say something, what, I know for the different times I've sat in on this, it's, we do look who's being served.
Right.
Not a number in particular. Now, they could say, how many Lincoln City residents do you expect will be served? Would be probably a little bit more palatable. But I know that is always first question. Is this for the city or the county?
Yeah.
And we've rejected people from the county.
Right.
For the most part. Okay?
Do you expect to be served? I think it's good.
Right.
Do you want to know from their previous, how many they actually served? From when they're given the history of the grants that they had already received?
If they know that.
Yeah, if, it's just one of those helpful pieces. If it's coming down to the line, you know, between one and the other.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering again, that we've gone this way, is should we not be thinking? And I'm thinking of BFY and stuff. These are school district, North County School District Geography. You know, I understand this is Lincoln City tax dollars being distributed. But if, if that trade area is served, you know, I think they're ours. So I'm almost to the decline of if the, you know, Lincoln City got scratched, and instead, the defining role was the school trade area, draft area, whatever our terminology is for that. Where I get anxious is a nonprofit that's countywide, and when I'm looking at the numbers, you know, they're asking for a lot of money, and the majority of their service clients are out of even North County.
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna move it down a little bit, because I want the north end taken care of. But, I don't know, school draw area or something.
Yeah, maybe describe...
For most of these, it's been pretty easy. You know, we know these groups for the most part.
We do.
They haven't been big mysteries. And it's easy to say, okay, yeah, it's, it's the... I'm sorry, what's the name of the group in Debovee? Kids...
Neighbors for Kids.
Neighbors for Kids. I mean, we know their coverage area, and it's easy to say, oh, well, that's, that's an exception. That's an easy one to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, they include city kids, and they probably can tell us how many in the city, and how many in the county, and how many in Debovee, but...
I would just, as a general, just maybe, would you expect to serve? It's just for the committee's efication, efficacy? Is that the right word? Whatever, that's late. One thing that's on here, and I don't think I necessarily would require it, but something that's super helpful the last couple of times is when we get a percentage of how much is gonna be going to overhead. And I think we rejected one that I can remember specifically because so much of the grant was just gonna go to management fees and things. It's like, I'm sorry, this is not going to the people you wanna help. It's going to pay someone's salary, and...
See, I would argue that one. So many, this is what, from what I've heard from nonprofits that benefit from this, they love this one because it's the only one that isn't so restrictive. So many grants today won't, won't do just what you're proposing. And so, how do I hire my staff? Where do I get the money for my staff if I'm not producing a product? Alls I'm doing is services. It's gotta go to some, to overhead.
I understand.
And usually, what they do is if they, a specific project, you know, they'll carve off a bit for... But so many funders won't touch it, just as you're proposing, and I would argue against it. I think, you know, that's been one... If they're doing a good job, and to your point, we know them, and they're doing a good job, I want them to stay here, and you...
As I said, I wouldn't make it a requirement.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things that I, I give a preference to, the ones where I know it's gonna go straight to a kid. And, you know, it's a more volunteer-oriented group. But I agree with your point. There's a lot of people who need to pay someone to run things so that this keeps alive. So, I won't, I'm not asking for it to be a requirement. Have we pounded this one to death?
Mr. Mayor, you've given us a lot. I would suggest you don't act on it, and just let me go rework it and bring it back in two weeks.
So let it be written, so let it be done. With council's approval. Okay. All right, anything else here?
Yes, I have one other item, Mr. Mayor. So earlier in the meeting, Justin Spears commented on an incident that took place. I just wanna mention that you have documents that I gave to you earlier, emails and so forth, which I believe are public documents. But I just encourage you, as you evaluate things, that you read those.
Mr. Patello? Nothing tonight? Actions, if any, based on work session or executive session? We had no work session, so executive session?
Did you mention anything on the performance review?
Oh, for the judge.
I mean, it's a mild setter, since it's the first one in years.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, thank you, yeah. Yeah, we completed the, my first evaluation of the judge, I'm sorry, municipal?
Municipal judge.
Municipal judge. I don't know why I can't hang on to that word. Municipal judge. And it was interesting, because we haven't done it in the way we should have. And so, had a great discussion with him about the different points, and I think we learned a lot for future evaluation. We were satisfied with his performance and encouraged him to grow in some areas, and he gave us, as I said, some great feedback, I think, to that position, and so we're...
Mr. Mayor, could I add to that? That we also, I believe, see the need for the council to have a work session with him to develop some future goals, and so he knows what our targets are, and we can all work together to create the goals.
Yes, thank you so much. And then we have a second concerning... Oh, concerning the Justin Spears matter. And, yeah, so we had a discussion about that, and what council was gonna instruct me to do. So I need someone else to formulate those words.
It's kinda late, isn't it?
Don't put it in the form of a question. The motion, I believe, is gonna be to instruct the mayor to talk to HR concerning how to move forward with this, or our recommendations, or...
You know, similarity to further discovery for us, what the process...
So, instruct mayor to reach out, contact, discuss with...
Meet with, how about?
Meet with, thank you. HR director concerning this matter. And leave it at that?
No, not this matter. Concerning a process to follow regarding...
Regarding...
Progressive outcomes. Does that follow it?
Okay. Instruct mayor to meet with HR director... I got process to follow. With HR director...
To identify.
To identify, thank you. Process to follow. Counselor Casper, was it the last, the end of that? Progressive something or other?
I'm over 60, it left my mind.
Okay, so instruct mayor to meet with the human resources director to identify a process to follow...
Oh, with, no, progressive outcome.
Okay. Would someone make that motion?
I made it. I'll make it, I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, so move to the second.
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion. I would just say, I just wanna make sure that Mr. Spears knows that we did discuss the matter. We did hear it. We've heard from Ron also, and so we're gonna move forward from that point with this discussion with the HR director. So Colleen, if you're at some point this week... Well, actually, that'd be tomorrow. Bingo, tomorrow morning.
That's quick.
Yeah, I know. Any further discussion?
You'll get back to us then?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And, yeah, I guess by the next meeting, is that satisfactory? Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
And there was one other issue that was covered prior to my arrival in executive session, but I did get the memo, and I'm prepared to vote on any motion that someone might make.
I think the appropriate motion would be to authorize execution of your agreement settling...
Oh, yeah.
Both the Smith, well, the Smith, the Smith claims...
This started at 4:00, people. It's now 9:48.
Motion to authorize approval and execution of the settlement agreement in the Smith case's claims. With, I guess, execute, well, assuming we get all the signatures and it's filed, hopefully, performance would be on the 26th.
Did someone say so moved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. And then, so, just so I'm clear, we say yes tonight. Do each of us sign tonight that we want to sign tonight?
Well, you sign for the council. You're authorizing execution by the mayor on behalf of the city. Any other named plaintiffs or defendants would have to sign. So Counselor Walke is named, Kip is named, and of course, we have two former counselors named as well that haven't not yet signed.
Okay.
So we have some signatures to get.
Okay, good. Was that it? Did we vote?[1629.26] No, so, yeah, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Oh, sure, roll call.
Williams?
I'm sorry, hang on a second, what?
Well, it's missing a date line, I just noticed.
Okay, it's missing a date line on our copy? For the signature?
Sure, it can be put in.
Well, each, I think when everybody signs, there's dates on the last page for the signature page.
Well, there's dates under every signature except odds.
You're right again, yeah.
I can handle that part, all right, Kathy, roll call please.
Williams?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
No.
And Hinton?
No.
Three, two.
Two. Three, two.
Motion carry. Okay, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Seeing none, announcements or comments by city council?
I have a few comments. We appointed two people to the Parks Board tonight who were city residents, and the way the code is written, if we don't have enough applicants who are city residents or urban growth boundary residents, then we can appoint someone from the Taft High School District. We have one more opening on the Parks Board, and we have two applicants who live outside the city and outside the UGB. We also have openings on the Visitor and Convention Committee, the Budget Committee, the Sustainability Committee, just really looking for people, and the Public Arts Committee. So I encourage one of the applicants for the Parks Board to consider one of the other committees, and I welcome other people to apply for those other committees.
Just a couple.
Mr. Mayor. I just would like to add to that, is there any way we can consider adding one more position to the Parks Board? Because both of those two people who, who are being referred to are excellent, excellent candidates, they're just excellent, and to lose one of them would be a great loss. It'd be nice if they would offer to jump over to another committee, but that wasn't their heart, but.
And how does Mr. Anderson feel about adding positions to committees?
You know, there's, we forget, the pay is the same as the mayor gets, quite frankly, and it's a public forum, and we would invite, you know, all to have interest to, to come, and encourage, if both, they ought to come, someone will be moving, changing short order, and that, that would make more sense than changing a number. Because quite frankly, you don't change, add one, you add two, to keep it an odd number, and it goes on from there, and then you work, run into, like some committees, a quorum problem, because the committee is too large, and don't show up, things cycle, so I would just encourage people to follow their passion and show up. How's that?
I don't know how to make.
I'll get them a ribbon at the end of the day.
Well, it is nice to have this discussion, that we actually have a problem where we got too many applicants.
It is, it's great.
I agree.
Encourage them to go to Public Arts or something. Anything else? I cannot believe I don't have anything else to say. Anyway, with that, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City, we are adjourned.
Only six hours after.
I have nothing more to say, since Celebrate Recovery doesn't meet.
Oh, that's right. Mayor, do you have a blue pen?
I have one. Right here. You may borrow it, Don.
Oh, for what?
I, it sounds like she's bringing you something aside.
As early as I can make it, fleeing town tomorrow. Two twelve? Nine o'clock, okay. No, 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 yeah, I was just asking for an answer. Yeah, sorry, that did come out of my mouth a little weird. You know what, can we read right now? Because I think this would be super simple. I'm going to be a second while I wrap.